And note this meeting is being taped by FCTV. I'd like to introduce the board and the staff. To my right, we have Jerry Potamus, who's an associate member. Sitting next to him is Frank Duffy, voting member. Mark Fineran is also a voting member. We have Paul Haverdy here assisting us as a Mass consultant. James Morse is off this evening. He had a work emergency, so I'll be acting as chair. My name is Scott Peterson. I have George Pucci to my left. He's our special counsel for this project. Suzanne Murphy is our clerk. Tony Pichucci is also out this evening. We have Noreen Stockman, who's our zoning administrator. And Ashley is our office assistant, who without everybody here, we couldn't function. So, very appreciative. Our zoning vote of appeals is charged with applying the state zoning statutes, as well as the town zoning bylaws, and reviewing and voting on applications. First order of business tonight is public comment. Does anybody have a public comment that they'd like to give to the board for this evening that is not about today's meeting? Yes? Please tell us your name and what you'd like to discuss.
Thank you. Hi, Julie Kelner, Fourell Dock Road. We've been in front of you before, and I'm not going to get into case details, but I'm, again, asking for more transparency. We've recently sent a letter in about a recent decision. This is the second time with a different decision that we've requested that the decision that's written matches the case that was heard and that's taped and available. So, I'm asking the board who's checking the decisions, once they're written, it would be nice if those were signed off as to who on the board has confirmed that those were done, and also letters like this that we write in, that they go in the file. So, again, this is about process and transparency, that I'm going to keep coming back and asking that you improve your record-keeping and your transparency to us, because we should expect the written decisions match the verbal decision that was made. So, that's a request. I'm going to keep coming back to request this. I know I'll get an answer from the ZBA office, and I want to... You have a big case, but please, can you talk about at your board meetings, improving the way that you give us information? When things are expunged from a file or received for a file, everything should be recorded as well, even if it's correspondence while the decision is in this 20-day period, please. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Tonight, we have a continuation. Article number 09323. Falmouth Southerly LLC is requesting a comprehensive permit to construct 300 units... 300 rental apartments throughout five separate buildings, a clubhouse, and amenities. Subject properties are 0 and 375 Sandwich Road, East Falmouth, and for the applicant.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair. Are you going to appoint me as a voting member, or...
Yeah.
So, you can have five? Do you have five?
No. Jim would be able to use the...
Oh, okay.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening. David Kelhoun from Saxon Partners, the applicant. We sent over to the ZBA earlier this week, a proposed agenda for tonight, and if it's all right with the board, we'd just like to walk you through our thoughts on what that agenda would look like, and then move through it as the board sees fit. Obviously, tonight is scheduled to be the traffic peer review.
Correct.
BAI is in our expert, so it's basically traffic then.
Correct.
In addition to the traffic, we're hoping to get an update on the peer review process. We have not seen the reports from Beals and Thomas yet. I know that they're working to try to get something out by February 1st, and that's important to us, because we would like to hopefully move towards some work groups, and having that baseline in place is critical, so that we know where we are. The other item that we would like to talk about just briefly, we were asked by one of the abutters to do a shadow study. That shadow study was completed and submitted to the town on January 11th. I wasn't planning on having our architect here to talk about it, but if you want, and feel the need to have him here, just let us know on that item. The shadow study's complete. The next item, who was requested by Mr. Fineran? I didn't see the Bruins outfit, so I can go. He asked us to do a balloon test. We submitted to the board a scope of work and positions on that, and what we were hoping to get from you guys is okay on that. Originally, he just asked us to float a couple balloons and let people see what's happening. What we did is we came up with a plan. I believe we have five or six locations identified on the plan. We have a notice letter that would go out to all the abutters. It will not go out certified, it'll just go out to the abutters that are listed in the application now, notifying them with the date, the time. The balloons are only going to be up for approximately two hours, but we're also going, at the same time, we're going to take it one step further, and we're going to do a drone study. So, we'll be able to put the drones right at the same height as the balloons are, and they can do a 360 shot from where they are. We can then take the drone, and we can go around the neighborhood and shoot back to the spots. And in that letter, we ask if someone has an objection to a drone flying near their house in the neighborhood, to give our civil engineer a call, and they will note that for the file.
Yes.
Is there any particular reason why you can only do this for a couple of hours and not starting early in the morning? And it would allow people who work for a living to be able to see them either on their way to work, perhaps they take time off at lunch, or on their way home? I think the two-hour window is kind of limited.
Well, that's why we went the extra step, and we're doing the drone survey, because we'll actually have a video, and we'll have photographic record of everything we do, so people can look at it. And the drone... The balloons only being up for two hours is because we have to pick a window when the weather's most favorable, and it's not blowing. And we also, you know, in the olden days, we used to put them up and wait for them to blow away. You don't do that now. You put them up, you monitor them, you take them back down, because you don't want to come and create another problem. So, I can talk to the civil engineers, and we can try to push it so that it runs from, like, 10 to 1, or something like that, 10 to 2.
I just... I don't understand why it can't be done for the day, so everyone can see.
Because they're going to be coming down here, they're going to be setting up, they're going to locate the positions, they're going to be setting the elevations. So, by the time 10 o'clock rolls around, they will probably have already been on the site for three hours. And then by the time they complete the drone study and everything else, you know, picking up to get back off the site before the end of the day and get stuff. I'll ask them about some additional time, and... But that's the best we can do, I think, we're going to bug them beyond on that, but we'll talk to them about it.
I certainly would appreciate it myself, and as well, with all the CAD systems that you have and everything, could we not pick some locations on the periphery where you could give us some diagrams of what the buildings would actually look like from those spots? I mean, it should be pretty easy. It's not like projections in the old days, when I went to school, when you had to, you know, I mean, you just plot and hit go, and, you know, a couple of sheets, you know, left, right, I mean, north, south, east, west?
It's been asked of us, and we're working on that now. What we're going to do is do sections to that area, so that you would have a view of if you're standing on the property line, if a property to our rear, you'd have a view and what you potentially see through the forest, and where the building would be.
Yeah.
So, that will be done, and we'll be presenting that, hopefully, in the working session.
Well, it's... It'd be nice, because, you know, people get to use both sides of their brain, you know? And I know I'm slightly familiar with balloon tests, and, you know, it gives you the height, but with nothing but a string there, you know, and a... You know, people don't tend... Sometimes they don't get what the actual mass would be. You understand what I'm saying?
Yep.
You've done this enough.
Yep.
So, I think in conjunction with those diagrams, drawings, whatever, and then them actually seeing the balloon, if they can get there within whatever window, that's why the greater the window that these balloons are up, the better for the... And the more comfortable the people around will be, and I mean, after all, that's what everybody wants, I think, certainly our.
In that letter, you'll see that we provide the phone number for our civil engineer, and if, for example, an abutto would like to volunteer, to have the civil engineer come to their property and look at it, and actually see what's there, and see how dense it is behind somebody's house, that's something we can also look at doing. But we have to be invited, so if we are invited, we'd be glad to do it.
And I'd just like to add that anybody that is observing these balloons would maybe wise to use their camera phones, just to, you know, have it, so they'll know.
Yep. Our goal is to also have the engineers go out to the streets surrounding, look back. We're going to try to document as much as we can as to what actually is seen and not seen, and put together a nice package for the board, and that will be submitted to the ZBA staff, and they can post it on the website.
So, to your point, when you send out the notification of the balloon test and the time, you'll also put in that opportunity for the civil engineer, so the folks can contact them?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
Quick question. What's the clarity going to be for the angle of the drone that's 40 feet up looking down at a... I don't know, 120, 130 feet? I mean, could we make out a six-foot person or something like that? People are concerned with privacy, so it's...
I think the drones that are being used, they're commercial drones, and they are very strong, so we'll try to make sure that we're not putting the stuff up in the air and not being able to see anything.
Now, are these drones... How sensitive are they to... As to altitude, or can they measure?
The drones can actually determine, and the engineers can actually set them and have them hover at an elevation. They could have them hover where a window is. They can move them around a lot more freely than they can a balloon test.
Yeah.
And that's why we're going down that route to give...
So, they're sensitive within inches?
Yes, they are.
Excellent.
The other thing we're hoping to discuss tonight would be next steps, when you'd like to have the peer review from the civil team here, and hopefully, maybe we can establish a calendar for future meetings, to give people as much notice as we possibly can. And then, the other thing is, what we'd really like to do is, I know a lot of people have said we aren't listening, we aren't hearing, a lot of it is that we haven't had a chance to talk a lot, and it's very difficult to talk in this setting. But we're very, very confident that we hear what people are saying. I believe, just before 5:00 this evening, I received an email from Ashley and Noreen. Is a gentleman by the name of Francis Chevalier here?
No.
No. He wrote a great letter to...
Well, can we... Yeah, could I... Well, one thing, can we just stay on point first? I'd like to answer the question.
We were looking at February 15th for the next meeting for the civil review.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. So, yeah, if at all possible, can we jump right into the traffic review, please?
Is, I guess, the town's peer review engineer? Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, my name is Jeffrey Durk. I'm the managing partner with Vineson Associates, and as I think was said earlier this evening, we're the board's peer review consultant as it relates to traffic and transportation. So, it's my understanding you've had at least an initial review as to the applicant's traffic study, just by way of kind of what our role is for the audience. As a peer reviewer, our role is obviously to represent the town in assessing the, in our case, the transportation study and the materials as they relate to traffic and parking for the project itself. There is some overlap with what the civil engineer reviews as well, in terms of looking at the site plans. However, our comments pertain to really access circulation and parking and looking at the site plan. So, as you look at the review letters that we produce for you, to date, you have one peer review letter from us. That letter's dated January 8th, and that letter contains our review of everything that was submitted as a part of the initial application. So, the site plans, the architectural drawings, and the September transportation impact assessment that was provided by the applicant in support of the project. So, the letter outlines two pieces. The first part of the letter addresses our comments as they relate to the traffic study. And then, for those of you that go beyond the first few pages, is a detailed review of each element of the transportation assessment that was submitted as a part of the project. I will walk through those just very briefly, to give a high-level overview of the analyses that were conducted by the applicant. I will also go through each of our comments. The applicant has since submitted a response to those comments as a letter dated January 18th. That letter contains the applicant's responses to our initial review comments. We have since had an opportunity to review the applicant's responses. I will summarize what those responses are as they relate to each of our comments. After this hearing, we will then issue our response letter, or our review of the applicant's response letter to those to our initial review comments. So, just getting into the transportation analysis as it relates to the project. So, the project by way of its context, it's a 300-unit residential development with a single point of access coming off of Sandwich Road. That access is approximately 1,600 linear feet in length. That will be a subject of a comment that we have as we get later on, in terms of our review. We did assess the impacts of the 300-unit development proposal as the applicant submitted the architectural drawings. We have an understanding of the placement of the buildings on the site, as well as the height of the buildings. From our standpoint in evaluating traffic impacts, number of units is important, but the height of the buildings is also important. The height of the building tells us the type of multifamily residential that's proposed. So, when we look at it, there's really three classifications of multifamily residential. There's low-rise, mid-rise, and high-rise. So, your low-rise buildings are generally three to four stories in height. When you get up to above four stories, and going up to about 10 stories is considered mid-rise, and then anything above 10 stories is considered high-rise construction as a result of the multifamily. It's a little bit different in terms of our previous classifications, but in general, the lower the height of the building, the more traffic is generated, and there's some reasons for that. So, as you get to low-rise versus mid-rise, a low-rise building of a same number of units will produce a larger number of vehicle trips versus a mid-rise building. And it does have to do with, really, to some extent, the demographics as it relates to those buildings, and it's been based on studies that have been done of several hundred of these type of residential developments over well over 50 years, so there's a good data set for us. So, we're really looking at mid-rise in general buildings as it relates to this project itself. The applicant has proposed two levels of parking supply, so they proposed, you know, an overall parking supply above 517 vehicles, which gets to a parking ratio of about 1.72. However, the plans that we reviewed included a provision to potentially land backs and parking, so about 34 parking spaces, which would bring the parking supply, constructed parking supplies, they proposed it to 483 parking spaces, which would be a parking ratio of 1.61 parking spaces per unit. We do not look at parking ratios based on bedroom count, because generally, you know, you'll have discussions on the number of bedrooms within the projects. The better way for us to look at it is just a total blended ratio, where we look at the number of parking spaces per residential unit. And so, again, 1.72 is what's shown on the site plan, although they propose the constructed parking ratio of 1.61 parking spaces per unit, which is a land back in the spaces. So, the first thing that we undertake as a part of our peer review is to ensure that the document as is provided to you is compliant with state standards, and those standards are set by the Massachusetts Department of Transportation. So, as transportation professionals, they have guidance to us as we're conducting these studies on in terms of what needs to be in the study, the type of data collection that needs to be undertaken, the methodology that's used, and then finally, looking at how do you assess the impacts of the project itself. So, there's standards that we follow in conducting that. There's also industry standards, so best practices that are also put into play. These practices and the standards that are applied are related to the amount of traffic that's produced. A project that produces more traffic has a larger study area, because it may produce more impacts that go further from the project site, rather than... Versus a smaller project generates a little less traffic, so our study area is more condensed. So, this project at 300 units of multifamily housing, again, in the mid-rise classification, it generates about 120 peak hour trips. So, we're talking about peak hours. It's for a residential project. It's a one-hour period in the morning between 7:00 and 9:00 in the morning, when the traffic will be at its highest level, not only for the project, but also for the adjacent roadway. And then, there's a period in the afternoon that generally occurs between 4:00 and 6:00 in the afternoon, when the traffic from the project will be high as well as the roadway. And so, we're looking at the peak of the project added to the peak of the roadway network.
Excuse me?
Can we ask questions as we go, or should we save them?
Sure.
To the end? As far as this is concerned, with the parking, the trips, you know, the whole traffic study, I understand that you have metrics that you use, and limited metrics. I'm sure, you know, you don't have one for every, you know, they're averages, but I just, in reading through this, and attempting to read through this, the first thing that struck me is, these units are more expensive, and they are... This seems to be geared to working people, morning. I would submit that a great majority of these residents are going to be fairly affluent, most potentially retired, what, upwardly mobile and active. I really think that the traffic is going to be more than is determined here, and I'd also submit that these people are... They tend to be healthier, walkers, bicyclers and such, and I would guess that it's probably going to double the pedestrian bicycle traffic on Sandwich Road. So, I... It's not a criticism, but it's an observation that this could be off 25, 30, maybe 40% just because of those reasons, and, you know, I mean, that's just to start out, but I just... That struck me right in the beginning.
So, I think, you know, as it relates to the trip generation for the project itself, we do not use averages as it relates to that. So, these numbers as they relate to the project, and again, as I went through, I went through three types of multifamily landage codes that we use, or types of multifamily housing, there's lots of other classifications within that. So, if, for instance, this, you know, coming in is an affordable housing project, or if we're coming in as an affordable housing, or a senior, there's a whole separate set of metrics that are used for that, and those numbers produce different results. In fact, we produce lower numbers. So, these are not... The numbers that they use are not averages. It's... There's probably, let's say, 300 data points that are available, and when we look at developing the trip generation numbers, it's, you know, it's a scientific analysis that's been done, where they use, instead of doing an average, the average rate is provided. So, it just basically looks at the 300 data points and provides an average, and it's a straight linear equation, so it's a straight line. When there's a significant amount of data, as there is for multifamily residential, there's actually a logarithmic curve that's created. So, what they're doing is not looking at an average, they're looking at the best-fit curve and using a logarithmic equation to do it. So, we're actually airing, in some instances, on a higher side. The numbers also are not adjusted to accommodate pedestrian and bicycle activity, which I, you know, agree with you, that to the extent that there's the ability to be able to do that, and destinations that people want to go in, there'll be a significant amount of activity that's not there today, and that needs to be considered, as it relates to looking at, you know, considerations for potential improvements, because there's no sidewalks along Sandwich Road today, there's not bicycle accommodations there. So, those are the kind of things that, you know, the board, you know, and hopefully with our, and with my assistance, can help you with coming up with something, to have discussions with the applicant, as to things that they might be able to advance as a part of the project that would help not only their residents, but also all the residents in enhanced safety along the corridor. The other thing is that relates to the 120 peak hour trips, is that that's during one hour. So, if, let's say, between 7:00 and... Let's say the peak hour occurs between 7:00 and 8:00. So, we're saying at 7:00 and 8:00, it's 120 vehicles coming in. It's two-way traffic, so let's say, you know, of the 120, maybe 100 of them are trying to come out, get out, and 20 are trying to come in, so that's where the 120 is.
Flips.
Yeah, but... So, if that's between 7:00 and 8:00, if you shift that, if you shift an hour, so between, let's say, 8:00 and 9:00, 8:00 and 9:00 may be 119 vehicles, but it's not 120. So, the point is, is that if you, if you spread out the time periods you're looking at, if you took a two-hour period, the project's going to produce more than 120 vehicle trips. But during a one-hour distinct period, when the traffic coming in and out of the site is at its highest level, it's going to be 120. If you shift it an hour one way or the other, it might be 119, it might be 118, it's just not going to be 120. So, the daily number is somewhere around, it's over 1,300 vehicles per day that will be coming in and out of the project. And so, when we're talking about the peak hour, it's just a one-hour period, but in aggregate, over the course of the day, they're going to be producing well over 1,300 vehicles, you know, half in, half out of the project. So, I think that's important, to some extent, that, you know, the applicant can provide to you a graph that shows, over the course of the day, how does this traffic... Because what it does is, it comes, it peaks in the morning, and then drops off, there's a little bit of a peak in the afternoon, drops off, then comes back up, you know, during that four to six peak period. So, if you look at it in aggregate, you know, there's a fair amount of traffic that's going to be generated.
I'm still reading it. I think it might be a little low, because there's...
Correct, right.
I mean, people can be very active, retired, especially people of means.
And to some extent, as you're considering even with our review, and what we do as well as the peer reviewers, really to test what you're talking about, which is to say, let's say you're off by 10% or whatever, what does that mean? And what does it mean from the standpoint, not only impacts of the project, but how does it impact the roadway network? So, that's, as the peer reviewer, that's also what we're doing, which is to say, if they're off by a certain percentage, what does it mean? And then, ultimately, what we're looking at is, if there's something broken out there that needs to get fixed, how do we go about fixing it? And looking at that variation, because, you know, if they're off one way or the other, you know, what does it mean in terms of suggestions for mitigation? So, that's what we get to as well. But the starting point is what the applicant suggested for traffic numbers, and then our role as a peer reviewer is to say, okay, let's say they're off, and they're generating more traffic, let's see what that means. And our comments really get to kind of testing some of the assumptions that they have.
Yeah, and I... Okay, we'll go on, but I'm going to have more to say, because...
Absolutely.
I have plenty to say, as usual.
So, I think from the standpoint of where the trip generation, and the reason I brought up the 120 peak hour trips, is because we have to define the study area. So, really, the number of intersections that they look at in the traffic study is proportionate to the amount of traffic that's produced. So, Mass DOT's criteria is that when you're doing a transportation assessment, you need to look at any intersection where the project will add 100 or more peak hour trips, or will increase the traffic by 5% or more. So, that's the rule of thumb.
Now, you brought up another thing that jumped right out at me. First off, I'm very familiar with this road. I have a friend who's handicapped, and he's... I have a, a friend who's handicapped, and he's very active. I, and I'm his Uber. I drive him all over the place, and I'm up and down there two and three times a day, maybe more. And I see a lot of traffic. And I also see here that you did not include Sandwich Road and Route 28, which is a huge bottleneck. And it's, it's consistently, and of course, this wasn't done in the summer either, and I don't think that the 25% fudging is enough. That on a, on a rainy day, when people are all out traveling, or on a Saturday, where Sandwich Road meets Route 28, it is backed up. It's constant. I mean, and it really is going to have an effect on that intersection as well, and it's, there's no mention of it here whatsoever. And I mean, it's just something I picked up on, and I don't think it should be dismissed.
So, I think just to, I guess, just to get to some of the, so I'm going to speed this up.
Okay.
We're, we're jumping ahead of kind of where, where we are. So, the applicant's, the applicant's adjustment to peak summer month is 50%. It's about 49, it's a little bit less than that. So, I think, and this is something you have to read, if, you know, it is confusing as you're looking at the documents as they're prepared, what they did in the response to comments, because I specifically asked them, because we're on Cape, you need to, this standard really is you look at average conditions, which is the state requirement, that's the absolute minimum, you have to look at average conditions anywhere in the Commonwealth. Then you also need to, if you're in an area that's subject to seasonal fluctuation, you also look at peak summer month conditions. So, Cape and Islands, we look at peak summer month conditions. There may be other reasons in different areas of the state to look at other months of the year, but predominantly, that's what we're looking at. If we're in Greenfield, the western part of the state, sometimes we look at the leaf peeping season to see what that impact is. The Cape Cod Commission publishes seasonal adjustment data for us, so we have Cape-specific data to be able to look at how does, in the case of the applicant's traffic study, they collected data in February, how does February compare to average? And in the case of February data on the Cape, in order to get to average conditions, they're 24%, 24% higher under average conditions, which would be April, May roughly than, than February. So, they apply a 24% adjustment to get average conditions, which is consistent with the Cape Cod Commission data. What they then did at our request in asking them to look at peak summer month conditions is they made a further adjustment of 25%. So, it's an aggregate of 49% applied to the February numbers to look at something where it's, it's peak summer month conditions. So, that's how they arrived at it. We are, you know, it's unfortunate that as traffic engineers, we can't always collect data during the absolute peaks of the year.
That was my wording.
Yeah.
Exactly.
However, to the extent that that is, you know, a concern and, you know, a legitimate concern, what you ultimately look at, you know, farther down, further down the road here is that you set a traffic monitoring program, which is to say, to the extent that the board becomes comfortable with the information that's presented to them, the analysis has been done, and what the mitigation measures may be, it's not uncommon that, which you also have this traffic monitoring provision, which says that during, you could do this where you say the applicant needs to go out and collect traffic count data under peak summer month conditions at their driveway and to do a couple of things. The, the monitoring program ensures that 120 peak hour trips we're talking about, that the project generates 120, not 150, 120. And that the monitoring program includes measures that say, if you're more than what you've represented to us and that we're based in approval upon, there's certain things that have to take place to try to either get yourself back in line with those numbers because that's what you're, you formed a level of comfort with, or there's additional mitigation that has to take place. So, when, when the appropriate time comes, we want to make sure that, again, they provide an inaccurate representation of what the impacts of the project may be, that they provide a level of mitigation that's commensurate with the impacts, but also address safety concerns, I think, first and foremost. And then, you can add on those other things, like the monitoring provision that says, we know that you couldn't collect your traffic count data during the summertime, you did the best you could to analyze it, we've had it peer reviewed, and we're going to add a layer to that which says, we want you to go out and monitor. We want you to monitor during, you know, July, August, not during a holiday weekend, and you collect the data, provide a report that's submitted to the board, and you are allowed to obtain a peer reviewer to, to review the data.
Yeah.
So, that, you could do that. I mean, that, and again, that's not something that's uncommon.
But, I mean, unfortunately, our window ends in May, and just, you know, I'm kind of a numbers guy occasionally. And I mean, I've seen estimates where, well, we know the population of this town is in the neighborhood of 33,000, but there are also estimates that in the summertime, it swells to 100 and 125. So, that doesn't really jive with the, the 25 and the 24 fudge, I'm going to call it.
Right. But again, I guess the other part of it as well is to, to understand that even, you know, with the analysis they've done, it shows something that everybody knows, which is congestion, backups, queuing in intersections. There's also, I, you know, I know this diversion of traffic, people use different travel routes because to your point, I can't get on 28, so I'm not going that way, I'm going to go a different way. So, there's a lot of those things that happen that there is absolutely no way for us to capture it in the traffic study unless you're measuring it at the time that those things take place. But I think the important part of it is really to look at, what we're trying to assess is what is the impact of this project versus conditions without the project? So, it's something where even as you're speaking about Route 28 and looking at the intersection, if it's something where today we know that it's a, it's a failing intersection, it's over capacity, and there's backups that happen, you know, the applicant can certainly look at that, what we're trying to see is how much additional traffic does the applicant add to that condition? Because that's what the measure of the impact is, and then what does that impact really mean? Absent mitigation, things aren't going to get any better at those locations. So, as we're looking at the study area, which did not include the intersection that you're talking about, 28, we look at how much traffic did the applicant send down in that direction? And as it relates to traffic going in that direction, I believe it was about 20% or so of the 120 vehicles would be going down that section of the road. Now, to the same question you asked, well, maybe it's not 20%, maybe it's some higher percentage, and maybe it's a different percentage during different times of year. That really gets back to that monitoring provision, because again, it's something where if you get through the process to a point where you're comfortable and you're comfortable with providing recommendations as it relates to potential conditions and improvements, the monitoring program can be structured of the same way, which says, not only are we looking at volume, we're looking at distribution of traffic. And if, if you're saying that 20% of your trips can go down there, well, I'm skeptical, but I'm willing to go, you know, go along with that. The monitoring program that would say, you also need to look at that distribution. And if you said it's 20%, and it ends up being 50%, then that impact found at 28 that you've suggested is going to occur is much greater than what you said. And so, the monitoring program has, again, the corrective actions. And that's the thing, monitoring for the sake of monitoring doesn't do you anything, you have to have the corrective actions. But we, we need to get to a point where you're comfortable to say that, okay, I'm comfortable, but I still might have a little bit of skepticism, and so the monitoring may be able to kind of bridge that gap.
So, with this monitoring, which I absolutely believe, but also the horse is already out of the barn, I mean, what, what are the measures that we could take to alleviate this, which I consider in the summertime already to be at maximum on that particular intersection? And it was just like glaring that it wasn't included in this study.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think what you do is you try to structure something, again, where it's really commensurate with what the potential increase that the project may cause in terms of the impacts of that intersection. So, you know, you'd have to tailor, and I'd need to look at it a little bit more closely and provide to you kind of some suggestions as to how you would do it. But there's, there's a lot of ways to kind of attack that, and I think the important thing, even as it relates to the applicant, is to provide, try to provide something where they can monetize it. So, it's me, you know, working with you to come up with something that lists what those may be, and that at least so that when the applicant then looks at it and they can say, okay, well, here's what my potential is, and then they know what the exposure is, you know, they know what the cost exposure may be, so they can, you know, consider that. So, I think we, we need to look at it, I think I would need to be a little bit more educated in terms of looking at the intersection and what potentials may be to kind of fix the bottleneck.
Because you're basically going to have to hold our hand through this, and I mean, we need to be educated as well, and.
Right. I, I would say just that it's not uncommon, so we're not, we're not, you know, going into an area where this is not, you know, it's not been applied to projects. It's actually pretty common that you have a monitoring provision that goes along with it. And again, it's something because to the extent that you're comfortable with the project, to the extent that you're comfortable to some extent with what's been represented, you want to make sure that that, that you don't have something that ends up being more impactful. Because then, like you said, the horse is out of the barn, and now what do you do about it? The monitoring gives you a little bit more control over those type of situations as well.
Well, I, I submit that it is going to be impactful, so we're going to need everything we can get from you.
Yeah, probably, probably a poor choice of words. It is going to be impactful. It does require mitigation. And so, you know, we need to get to a point where the applicant's flushed out enough of the impacts of the project. And I think, you know, they're, they're getting there with this, with the response to comment. And so, when I do deliver my next letter to you, which will be tomorrow, what you're going to see is now, you know, they've said, hey, we're willing to work with the towns on mitigation at specific locations. I've tried to kind of define what that might be. So, then the applicant will then look at it and monetize it, and then you can look at it and say, okay, is this getting us to where we want to be on that? So, that's, you know, that's where we're trying to get to.
And you're going to help.
Yeah.
We're going to need help crafting that because it's, it's guaranteed it's an issue.
Absolutely.
I won't slow you down.
No, no, that's okay. No, these are, these are great, great questions. And, you know, the thing is, is that as we get to our comments, you know, that's, that's what we're trying to get to. We're trying to make sure that we can try to get to a point where they've provided a reasonable representation of traffic volumes and impacts on the roadway, so then we can get to the next step, which is how are we going to address and mitigate those impacts? So, the, the study area did not include the intersections along Route 28. So, again, I could frame those parameters as to how the study area is generally established. So, there are study areas for intersections. It's the Sandwich Road corridor extending from, including Route 151 and the Brookhill Road intersection, and then the Brookhill Road intersection with Guilford Street and Guilford Street extension. So, that brings the study area. The fourth location was the, the project site driveway. And again, that study area is compliant with MassDOT standards as well as industry standards. I do mention, however, there is always local knowledge. So, you know, to the extent that additional intersections are something that are of concern to the board that may want to be evaluated, and it doesn't necessarily mean that the applicant needs to, traffic counts and full traffic analysis, but what it could mean is the applicant needs to say, how much traffic are you adding to this specific intersection? So, it provides a little bit more information as to, to your point, how much traffic are you thinking is going to head down Route 28 to this specific intersection? And then, it allows you to give away, do we want more analysis so that the applicant can also just look at it and, and provide some information as well. But from the standpoint of what they've evaluated, it, it meets what's required by the state, and it meets what is accepted industry practices. Again, it doesn't preclude additional intersections from being added to the extent that the board would like additional intersections, and the applicant doesn't necessarily have to do traffic counts, they could do some qualitative analysis of those locations.
Would we not benefit from a count at that intersection now and then a subsequent one in peak? Because I, I'm absolutely sure, it's, it's a bad enough bottleneck as it is now. I try to avoid it like the plague on weekends and rainy days, and, you know, I know my way to, around, but I, I would think that studying that now and then comparing the numbers in peak season would be of great benefit to everyone.
Yeah. I mean, again, to the, it's obviously a critical intersection, and so it is, we do want to make sure we capture critical intersections where the project might have an impact. And if it's an intersection that, you know, for lack of a better term, is broken today, we'd want to, let's get a, get a baseline. And, and again, thinking toward the monitoring, you want a good baseline. Good baseline helps the applicant as well.
And again, sorry, but I mean, Wednesday, it should have been a Wednesday and a Saturday. Absolutely should have been. I mean, and it, this, if we can do this, it, it needs to be a midweek, and it needs to be a Saturday because it's Saturday mornings, right, right through the day sometimes. It's just, that intersection is brutal when it's going to get worse.
So, we, so we can, I mean, the applicant can provide that information, nothing else. They can let you know, you know, the traffic volumes on a Saturday, as you know, travel patterns and things are different, and when the peaks happen are, are different as well. But, you know, the, I think, you know, the applicant can certainly quantify that so that you have an understanding of what, what that may be. So, we've spent a fair amount of time talking about the data collection, so it was done in February, we've talked about the adjustments that are made. So, the only other, I should mention, so the data collection, they collected two types of data, they collected turning movement counts at intersections, so they count the number of vehicles going through an intersection, whether they're turning left or right or going straight through, the type of vehicle. So, we know pets, bikes, motorcycles, buses, so all of that information is captured as a part of these turning movement counts. The other, the other type of data collection is what's known as an automatic traffic recorder count. What that does is it measures daily traffic volumes, it's measuring over 24 hours so that we can look at a traffic flow profile, so if you want to know how many vehicles are on the road at 4:00 AM versus 6:00 AM or any time through their day, that allows us to look at that. It also allows us to make sure that when they do conduct those intersection traffic counts, that they in fact capture the peak hour. So, looking at the roadway 24-hour volume, we want to make sure that the peak actually happens between seven and nine and not between nine and 10, because that would mean if they counted between seven and nine, they missed the roadway peak. So, it allows us to do those two things. So, we've taken a look at that and ensured that they did in fact capture the peak hours. The other critical thing as it relates to safety is that the 24-hour data also gives us speed measurements. So, as we're looking at the access off of Sandwich Road, we need to know the speed that people are actually driving on Sandwich Road as it relates to sight lines, to make sure that they have proper sight lines. So, the 24-hour count also gives us speed measurements over the entire day, so that's what that is used for as well. And we talked about these seasonal adjustments, state standards, average. You typically ask for a peak condition analysis on the Cape. The critical thing, even if this were a project that was going through Cape Cod Commission review, you, you're not required to mitigate peak, you are required to mitigate average. And so, that's a standard that we, you know, we hold not only if it's Cape Cod Commission review, but also as it goes through kind of standard review. And the reason for that is we don't build infrastructure for the summer months, we build it for nine months of the year, let's say, and we want to make sure that at least during those other couple of months when we have peak conditions, we hopefully don't go into complete failure and gridlock. So, it's kind of a balancing act, but what we don't want to do is over-design the roadways because that has implications for drainage, heat island impacts, all of those things. So, we're very cautious in terms of doing that. We have, as I said, the applicant has provided us peak season analysis because that was not provided as a part of the initial traffic study. The last comment I'll make as it relates to data collection is, we used to, prior to March of last year, we were required to perform a COVID adjustment. So, there was an additional adjustment beyond seasonality that was applied to traffic counts that was trying to account for the fact that, you know, I think we're, we're getting pretty darn close to that to pre-COVID traffic volumes, but any traffic counts that were done prior to March of 2022, actually, required a COVID adjustment. The only time now that we provide or apply a COVID adjustment is if for some reason we're in an area where there's a significant amount of office space because office traffic has not come back and it probably will not come back to the, to the levels that it was before. So, in those instances, we do provide a COVID adjustment, but it's no longer required, and MastOD has eliminated that from factors that we need to consider for the project. So, the next analysis or the next area that we had looked at is pedestrian and bicycle applications.
Can I just one?
And also some of its very.
Can I just one more question before we get there? Would it be possible after build-out for us to, for the rubber hoses, the traffic monitors in the driveway itself and calculate the actual in and out? And that way, we can compare it to what we have and see if we're on or what percentage we're off? Because I still, my personal feeling is that it's low.
So, when we develop the monitoring program, it always has two pieces of the data collection similar to what I mentioned. So, the two pieces that are done at the driveway is the road tubes, and we, when you're doing monitoring, you do seven days, not 24 hours. So, we do a complete traffic flow profile for the entire week, so it's a seven-day data collection effort on the driveway for the road tubes, as well as turning movement counts at the intersection. So, you get, you want two types of data. You want to get the daily numbers, you want it over seven days. So it gives you the variation. Because what we want to do is, as you were mentioning, you know, Mondays are low, Fridays are sometimes low, Tuesdays or Thursdays are high. Thursdays are generally your, generally it's the peak. That's, um, so that's why you want a seven-day profile. So you're able to look at it, you can eliminate the highs and the lows, and then you can look at what happens in the immediate week and do that. And then you do your turning movement counts at the intersection. So you want two types of data to be provided as part of the monitoring program. So, you know, that's something that, you know, at the appropriate time, we'll, we'll put that together so that you'll be able to review that kind of. We, we always want both sets of data.
And we can condition for these things should, should it arise as I suspected it will?
Right.
Okay.
And, you know, the thing is, to your point, is the corrective actions.
Yeah.
It's making sure that that's.
That's George's ball.
Um, so pedestrian and bicycle accommodations, again, very important as it relates to the, not only the project, um, because they are providing sidewalks and everything within the infrastructure within the project site, which is, which is good planning. Um, in the case of the location where the site is, there's nothing to connect to at the, at the present time. So as we look at the sidewalk infrastructure, which the applicant has done in the transportation assessment, the sidewalks are really, as you get closer to the school. So they're along Brick Hill Road, but you really don't have anything along Sandwich Road. Um, and then up at 151, you've got limited accommodations up there. So there's not a good sidewalk infrastructure there and certainly nothing that's continuous. Um, so I think as you're looking at the project and considerations as we get further on with, um, thinking about improvements and things, that's not fair. So someone will be able to walk within the site. They'll be able to walk within the site to Sandwich Road. So school bus is going to stop at Sandwich Road. You can certainly get children up to Sandwich Road to get the bus. Um, but that's where it ends. So there's nothing along Sandwich Road for it to connect to. So they've designed the project well in terms of what's happening within the site for pedestrians. Uh, but there is nothing to connect to at the, at the present time. So that's just something, it's a factual statement presented in the study. The same occurs with respect to bicycle accommodations. So there's no formal bicycle accommodations in the area. We did note that, again, going back to MAS DOT standards, if you have a, if you have a 28-foot wide roadway measured for full pavement width, or edge of pavement to edge of pavement, that's considered to be a roadway that you could put signs up that say, share the road. It doesn't mean it's a bicycle facility. It doesn't mean it's a great road to ride and bikes on. It just says it meets the absolute minimum standards. There's other things that go along with it, speed and roadway condition. So the width of the road, although it meets those criteria, um, speed and roadway condition are also things that come into play. So it's not something that I think either myself or the applicant suggested is a bicycle accommodation. We've just pointed out it meets the absolute minimum standards. If the roadway were, um, you know, had excellent pavement along its entire width, speeds were low, uh, which they're not in a 30 mile an hour range. Um, so meets the standards in one respect for width, but the other respects of speed. And volume is not something that we would suggest is conducive to bicycle travel. So there would need to be improvements if it were to be a roadway where you wanted bicycle accommodations. The next thing we look at is public transportation services, and there are none at the project site. Public transportation services are along Route 28. Um, so we don't have, as you're looking at opportunities to reduce traffic, um, we don't have bus service other than I think there's the on-demand service that the Regional Transit Authority provides, um, as well as dial-up ride for, um, pieces, persons that meet the ADA requirements. Uh, but we don't have the ability to have public transportation services at the present time. We don't have pedestrian accommodations and we don't have bicycle accommodations. So the things we would like to see as transportation planners, to be able to develop a program to effectively reduce traffic, it's, it's not something that's available at the project site. So I think to your point, as you're considering this project, it's auto-centric. You need an automobile to be able to get to where you're going here because you don't have that opportunity to get a bus to walk or to bike based on the existing infrastructure that's there. And again, just the consideration as you're thinking about, you know, ways to kind of improve the infrastructure in the area. The next thing that's evaluated is motor vehicle crash data. So there's two things with respect to safety that we look at as it relates to the traffic study. Um, the, the site distances at the driveway, which is what I mentioned, why we need the speed data, and then motor vehicle crash history. So we look at the history of crashes at the intersections they evaluated along Sandwich Road to be able to see if, even if you don't build a project, are there existing high crash locations in those areas, things that need to be addressed, even if you didn't construct the project? We want to focus in on those areas for improvements because you never want to have a situation where you have an unsafe condition and then you add traffic to that condition without addressing what maybe the causes of those crashes. So the applicant has undertaken a motor vehicle crash analysis of the intersections. And what we're looking at in terms of the crash information is we're looking at the number of crashes that are happening at each of the intersection. Um, and, and we assess that in relation to the volume of traffic going through the intersection. So what we're looking at is it's a number of crashes per million vehicles going through an intersection. And that's how we calculate what's known as a motor vehicle crash rate. So as we look at those crash rates, MAS DOT and the Cape Cod Commission publish data. So we know at a signalized intersection or at an unsignalized intersection, on average, what would you expect for a number of crashes in relation to the volume of traffic going through an intersection? And that's done both for Cape, for the region. It's also done for the state as a whole. Um, and so what we do is we look at that crash rate as calculated for each of these intersections and look at it in comparison to those, those average crash rates for Cape Cod as well as for the state itself. So as the applicant has undertaken that analysis, there were two locations that were identified as high crash locations. So meaning that the number of crashes that are happening at these intersections are disproportionate to the volume of traffic going through the intersection. Those two locations are the Sandwich Road, Route 151 intersection, and then the Sandwich Road at Brick Hill Road intersection. Both of those intersections experienced a number of crashes that's disproportionate to the volume of traffic going through the intersection. Um, the Sandwich Road, Brick Hill Road also had, um, two bicycle-related crashes at that location as well that occurred. And so, you know, we always look at, um, what's known as vulnerable roadway users and those are pedestrians and bicycles. And so that information was also pointed out by the applicant as well. So we did have, um, two bicycle crashes at the Brick Hill Road intersection. That's the first set of crash data that the applicant looks at. The other thing that we look at is, um, a crash ranking that the state has. And the crash ranking, rather than looking at number of vehicle crashes for a vehicle, number of vehicles going through an intersection, looks at the type of crashes. So what it's doing is looking at how many property damage crashes are happening versus, um, personal injury crashes or fatalities at intersection. And it weights them. So a fatality, it's really, they are given points. So a fatality may be weighted 21 points. Uh, property damage crash may be rated five points. And then a personal injury on a sliding scale could be worth like 10 points. All of those points get added up and then you look at, okay, what is the, um, the type of, in terms of the type of crashes, what is this, how is the severity to rank each of these locations? Um, and so the state publishes a high crash location list that looks at severity of crashes at intersections. And so that's another metric that's looked at. Those same two locations are listed as high crash locations on the state's database in terms of looking at the type of crashes, personal injury, property damage or fatalities. There were no fatalities, um, based on the reporting period, at least that was looked at here. But we have two locations, they are ranked high crash locations based on the number of crashes in relation to the amount of traffic. There are also high crash locations on the state's list in terms of the type of crashes that are happening as well. So because of that, we had asked the applicant as a part of our initial review to undertake a more detailed investigation of the crashes at those intersections. At the Route 151 intersection, it was noted that there were recent improvements done by MAS DOT at that location in 2022. And so we had asked the applicant to go back and now pull more recent data to be able to see, did those, did those recent improvements actually result in a reduction in the frequency of crashes at the intersection? So we said, the data they had was through 2020, and that's the most recent data that's been, um, validated by MAS DOT. They also gave us data for a recent time period. So we've asked them to give us data for 2021, 2022, or 2023 through the end of the calendar year. So we can see what is the trend in crashes at that specific location, which they have provided to us. And we've taken a look at that. And what you will see in the data is that there is a drop in crashes between 2022 and 2023. It's actually, you know, quite significant drop in crashes. So, you know, the hope is that it's working in terms of what's happening there. But at least the trend in that location is a downward trend in a positive direction. The Brick Hill Road intersection with Sandwich Road, uh, that is not a location that's had improvements. Um, and so we'd asked the applicant to prepare what's known as a motor vehicle collision diagram. So if you look at the recent response they have, there's a color-coded diagram of the intersection that shows the number of crashes are happening, the type of crashes, and then importantly, where they're happening at the intersection itself. Um, the reason that we asked for that is that that diagram allows us to see what's happening in terms of not just the number of crashes, where are they happening in the intersection? And what are the type of crashes? That allows us to be able to provide recommendations to the board to address those crash patterns at the intersection. Uh, so when you see our next response or our next review letter, you'll see that what we've done is looked at that crash diagram, taken a look at the type of crashes and where, and where they're happening at the intersection. And then we've developed a series of corrective actions that we're suggesting could be undertaken as a part of the project to address the crashes at the intersection. With the applicant's, as they've said, we're willing to work with the town to implement specific recommendations. What we've done is provided those recommendations based on the collision diagram. Uh, so you'll see more of a definitive list in our next, um, review letter that talks about what can be done to address the crashes.
I, um, could actually offer a suggestion there, being familiar with it as I am. Um, coming south to Brick Hill Road is where the traffic tends to back up and more than I think indicated in this. But I would suggest that heading south at the Brick Hill exit there appears to be room. A right turn lane onto Brick Hill Road would alleviate a lot of the backup and potentially, uh, offer a corrective measure for some of those crashes. And I think that's quite simple, that the land appears to be open.
Yeah, there's, I mean, we, and we could have a more substantive discussion as to the improvements that they needed at the intersection. I mean, it's, it is something where it's, it's under traffic signal control. That traffic signal needs to be completely replaced. It's, it's not a modern traffic signal system. The crashes that are happening at the intersection, to some extent, are because of that. Because you've got antiquated equipment that is not designed to accommodate the volume of traffic that's going through there. And also is not, because it's not able to handle it, it can't process it in a way that would address not only the backups, but also the type of crashes that are happening because it's not functioning properly. And so our recommendations are try to get to a point where at least what you have is functioning properly, but the intersection needs to be redone. Um, and so it really what's weighed, which is what is to be weighed, that's the reality of what needs to happen. The project is impacts. What we're trying to do is, is address the crash history and come up with mitigation that is commensurate with what the impact of the project is, recognizing there's a bigger fix that has to take place. You know, we can kind of flush out, you'll see what my suggestions are, and then we can kind of flush out some additional things with the board in other terms of comments there. But we've at least provide, tried to provide an initial list of recommendations for that. The other thing that, um, an intersection along Sandwich Road that was not included in the traffic study, however, was a location that, um, had a study undertaken by the Cape Cod Commission, which was the Sandwich Road, um, Hatsfield Road and Carriage Shop Road, those two separate intersections. Um, back in 2011, a, um, what was known as a road safety audit was conducted at that intersection because at the time it was a high crash location. It's no longer a high crash location. However, as a result of that study, there's a series of recommendations that were made for improvements at that intersection. We weren't suggesting that the applicant undertake a study of what the impact of the project was at that location. However, what we've asked them to do is look at that road safety audit, look at those two intersections, and provide a review of had those recommendations been implemented? Uh, because it was deemed at the time to be something that was important, important to the town, important to the commission to have this study done. And so the recommendations that are, that were, I think, as the applicant looked at it, continue to be valid and have not yet been implemented. Um, so the applicant's provided to us, the regenier has, a list of, here's what was recommended, here's what's been done, here's what's not been done. And are those recommendations still beneficial to safety and operations at that intersection? Um, and so as we've looked at that list, and again, the applicant has said they're willing to undertake some level of improvement at the intersection, we've taken the step in suggesting what, what we think based on the list that's been provided would be some effective improvements at that intersection as well to really address safety and some of the things that were pointed out as a part of that, uh, safety assessment that was conducted. You'll have a chance to look at that, provide some comments to the applicant as well. And again, it gets to your ability to be able to look at it, assess as to whether those measures seem to be effective. And the applicant can certainly in their mind monetize what the, um, um, the impact, cost-wise, of what those recommendations are. The, the cost of those is not important. As I'm looking at them, what we're trying to do is make sure that it's effective mitigation that actually works at the intersection and provides benefit, uh, to all of the roadway users there. So you'll see that in our next review letter. So we've gotten through our existing conditions analysis that's been undertaken. The applicant through state standards is required to look at a future planning horizon. Uh, the future planning horizon is set by MAS DOT is seven years in the future. So if they're looking at the year 2023, they need to be looking at the year 2030. So the seven-year planning horizon is standard for this type of traffic study. Um, the reason this, or how the seven-year planning horizon was set was it basically, it used to be five years. So we used to look at a five-year planning horizon. Uh, but it was determined that that doesn't provide enough information to, if we're suggesting improvements, you want those improvements to have some life. If the town's expending money or the applicant's expending money, you want to make sure it's not going to work just when the project's open, but that it has some ability to be able to provide sustained improvement for a longer time period. So the rationale between the seven-year time horizon is basically, it allows for a project such as this to go through this type of an approval process. Uh, the applicant to obtain approvals for the project and then build the project. So it really is saying, okay, well, let's give two years for that type of process to take place. And then we're looking five years beyond that. So they took the original five years, bumped it up by another two to recognize the fact that these projects have to go through an approval process and then move forward. So, um, the applicant's, uh, looking at a year 2030 because 2023 was their existing conditions analysis. Um, and they're looking at that 2030 condition with and without the project's traffic. So when we're talking about the impacts, what they're measuring is 2030 no-build conditions, which is the year 2030 without the project. And they're comparing that to what's known as 2040 build conditions. So build conditions are, it's the no-build and then you add the 120 vehicles on top of it. And then look at what happens as a result of that. So to establish the 2030 no-build condition without the project, the applicant worked with the town planning department to understand, um, projects in the area that are either have been approved and not yet built or are currently before town boards that may add additional traffic to the study here. So the town identifies that with the applicant. And the applicant includes the traffic from those identified projects within that no-build horizon. The other component of it is just general growth. So if this project didn't go forward or the board never approved any more projects in the town, um, there's things that are going to happen that's just going to generally increase traffic. And those things can be projects external. So something happens in Mashpee, and those people are trying to get across the canal and they drive through Falmouth to get there. It adds traffic that's not related to any projects that occur within the town. Uh, the other component is just generally increase in automobile ownership at households. So that's just simple as someone who's not of driving age now that lives at home, they get to driving age, they're going to get an automobile, that car gets added to the road. So we have additional traffic that is not caused by development specific. So that's included in a general growth rate. So the growth rate is published by the Cape Cod Commission. They publish it for, um, upper Cape, lower Cape, and mid-Cape areas. And so they collect data, um, continuously throughout the Cape and then they publish growth rate data so that we can look at, you know, what's happened year over year, um, in terms of, of, of traffic growth. Um, and so in looking at the traffic growth for the area that contains Falmouth, the growth rate was under 1%. I believe it was somewhere closer to like 0.6%. So it's just less than 1%. And that's pretty consistent with, um, elsewhere on the Cape as well. So it's generally less than 1%. Uh, we, if it, the growth rate is less than 1%, we apply 1% growth rate. And we don't typically use something less than 1%. Um, so that's what's been applied to establish general traffic growth. So what they do is they've done the traffic counts and then they apply a 1% growth rate. And that's a compounded annual growth rate. So it's 1% per year compounded annually for seven years. So it results in a growth rate that's, you know, over that seven-year period is higher than, than 1%.
Excuse me, on, on that also, um, I, I, I read it and I think there's a potential for that to be low because, um, since COVID, uh, the demographic in this town is, is changing quite rapidly. And it's going to be three or four or five years before we can really quantify it and appreciate it. But I just think that the potential is there that that 1% factor may be low. But so much of this is a moving target and we're going to have to keep monitoring it, as you said.
Right. And again, I think it's real. And again, I think it's really, when you're looking at the growth rate, it's certainly something that's acceptable, it's actually standard practice. We don't have too many areas where we see growth rates, you know, one and a half percent maybe over the, because again, it's over a seven year period. If you looked at a one year snapshot, the growth rate might be higher. If we went out 10 years and we wouldn't use a 1%, it would be actually something less than that. When you look at the regional planning models, they're looking at a 30 year time horizon, they're applying like 0.25 or 0.35. So the longer time that you do it, the growth rate is actually lower, it's lower, depending on how far out you go. You use, if we were doing maybe a two year study, the 1% wouldn't be enough. We'd look at something greater than that. It does, it does there. The 1% is standard, and I'd say it's pretty standard that that's applied throughout on the Cape as well as on the islands. Sometimes it's a little bit higher, might be one and a quarter, one and a half, but there's, you know, things that kind of constrain the growth over there as well. But the 1% is standard, but to your point, I think it's again weighing, what if it's more than 1%? What does that mean to that?
Well, I just want to be Fowl specific because that's my job. I'm not really concerned with, you know, a broader average because I, the greater chance that it doesn't apply.
Correct. What I would say is that again, when you think back to what I had mentioned as to when you're assessing what is the impact of the project, and you're assessing it based on the no build, what we want to be careful about is if you apply too much growth, and then that 1%, if you apply 2%, what it does is if I'm measuring the difference between no build and build, if you elevate the no build so high that when they add the traffic, what they're going to say to me is no impact. It's a miserable failure, there's no impact. So we want to be careful in terms of how we're doing that because even if it's a 1%, if it's 2% growth, the relative difference between no build and build is still going to be the same. So that delta is always going to be the same, it's just where are we starting from to measure that? And so that's, that's where, you know, 1%, it meets the standard. And as it relates to comparing no build to build, we're going to end up in the same place. The only thing would be is that they may be overstating what impacts may be at specific intersections before they add the traffic. And then again, what they come back is to say, it's already broken, we're just marginally making it worse, so we don't need to do anything. And so we want to just be very careful about that.
Well, the big concern is, my concern and the concern is stated there. Either end of this corridor is in the 5% range. And that's, and a small addition to traffic can add a large amount to that 5% and bring it up to two, you know, with, with, with a minor addition. I think you're aware of that.
Yeah, and along the same lines as you're thinking is that remember when I talked about the crash rate? So the crash rate is number of crashes per million vehicles going through the intersection. So as you look at that and think about that, it's like, okay, well then if the number of vehicles going through that intersection goes up, then you'd expect that the crashes will go up just because it's a crash rate. So if you have a certain number of crashes that are happening per million vehicles going through the intersection and you do nothing, then the potential for increased crashes also goes up just because the volume of traffic goes up. So that you are right as it relates to looking at those things, that if you add traffic and you do nothing, and it's already a high crash location, it's not going to get even better, it's going to get worse. So, you know, that's where identifying these issue areas, quantifying the impacts of the project, and then developing appropriate solutions to say, let's make sure that if the numbers, if it's not 1% and it's 2%, or the project generates more traffic, that whatever we put in place to fix it still works. And so that's where, again, in looking at what our suggestions are, is you looking at it and weighing exactly that versus say, do I think this is going to work?
And what, what also jumped out at me when I was going through this is, again, Sandwich Road and Route 28, I submit to you that that is probably also in the 5% range. And I, you know, I'm a naturally suspicious person, but you know, I'm, I'm here for that. And I, I think that really needs to be looked at and addressed and quantified.
Right. No, and you know, my role is a pure or similar to trying to, you know, it's to provide the information to you, but it's to kick the tires, to try to do that and then say, okay, you know, if we get to a point where it's, I'm still skeptical, but you know, I'm comfortable enough that I can work something to provide an appropriate condition for whatever it is. I mean, that's, we want to try to see if we can get to something like that, but make sure that you have enough information to say.
But I mean, if we do, did have three instead of two in the 5% range, the overview of this needs to be, yeah, you understand what I'm trying to say.
No, I absolutely do, yes. So that's, that's the no build condition, then the next thing that they need to do is assess what, actually before I, before I get to that point, as I mentioned, the no build condition has to include projects unrelated to this development. So the applicant did work with the planning department to understand that. Unrelated to what's being proposed, I know you've looked at the site, it's a very large area and only a portion of it's being developed. What we've asked the applicant to provide to us is information related to the potential development unrelated to the project of the, there's, you know, what they called Lot Two that would take place, which I believe of, you know, directly above the access road. There's also a larger parcel of about 13 acres that abuts the access road just to the north that does have the power line movement going through it. Unrelated to the project, what we want to understand is what is the potential development of those lots? We want to understand that for a couple of things. First, it influences if to the extent that that, those lots have access to the driveway, obviously the amount of traffic that's using that road to pass and repass is greater than what will just be generated by the project. So we know it's not what's being proposed at this time, but just to, you know, we would want to understand, is there the potential for additional traffic to be using the driveway? And then we can look at how does that traffic potentially result or impact the project's traffic? Does it result in any additional congestion that hasn't been considered? So we've asked the applicant to provide some information as to the development potential of those two lots and how it may add traffic onto that road, those, onto the driveway, as well as onto Sandwich Road. So again, it's not related to the project, but we want to include it in the no build condition because we want to get an understanding of if those lots were developed, how much is the base traffic on the roadway before we add the traffic from the project to build? So we've asked the applicant to provide that information to us. The second part of that probably gets to one of the more important parts of our site plan review, which is understanding how many vehicles and how many residential units, let's say, are served by the roadway, the single point of access as it's shown now. We need to understand that as well as we're thinking about emergency access into the site because there's, you know, there's the potential that the access road is configured, serves more than three of the residential units. And we want to make sure that we understand the traffic impacts resulting from that, but also in applying the safety standards, understanding how many residential units would have been served by that road. So again, we can provide recommendations to you as it relates to that access and looking at, you know, emergency access into the property itself. So that's information that we've asked by, for, from the applicant that is in the response to comments that we have evaluated. So I'll offer you my thoughts on that as well. Trip generation, I think we've talked about that initially in terms of how they've went about developing the traffic characteristics of the project. What I would suggest even to the applicant is that it may be helpful for them to show you that 24 hour profile. So simply provide to you how much traffic is going to be generated over the entire course of the day so that some of the questions as it relates to, you know, what does the 120 vehicles mean in relation to 13,000 vehicles or 1,300 vehicles that are going to be generated? So that you can then see that curve I talked about. You can look at any time of the day, how much traffic is generated, and it will add up to that 1,300 vehicles. And it may answer some of the questions as to, okay, that number seems low, or you can look and see, okay, now if I looked at a two hour period versus a one hour period, how much traffic is generated? And that graph I think will be helpful to look at that. The other thing that the graph does is we do know that there's a school off of Brick Hill Road just at the south of the project site. If someone wanted to see how much traffic occurs during the school peak hour, you'll also be able to see that number and be able to look at that in relation to the other peak time periods as well. That's something that the applicant could provide, and I think it might be helpful to answer some questions and maybe elicit some more questions from the board as well.
Can I touch on one more thing? Now, I mentioned in this and what you spoke of previously prior is the, the potential development on the rest of the site. We tried to get that answer in the last meeting and we were unable. It seems now that they say 11 residential homes on the balance, is that firm or is it somewhere between 11 and 600 more? I mean, we still don't know.
So just, you know, I guess by way of a preview for the applicant as well, I mean, I, what I, the question I have is, it appeared to me like that addressed Lot Two.
Only.
And, well, that's the question I have because it references Lot Two, which is the smaller parcel on the south side of the road, which, you know, I can look at that and say, that kind of makes sense. But then there's the 13 acres that didn't appear to be discussed as a part of that. That's a further question that I had as to it because there's those two parcels, and it seems like we addressed one. What I'm primarily wanting to understand is, is as it relates to the access, single point of access serving how many residential units? Because that, you know, that's something I think that needs to be understood.
Well, in a broader sense, it's a prevailing concern of this board and everyone else, and it would be nice to get a firm answer.
So we've asked the question, I believe we've gotten the answer to Lot Two. I don't know that I've gotten the answer to the, to the balance of that. I'm not sure that it's necessarily going to, it would change my thought, thoughts as it relates to the volume of traffic that could be using the roadway. It's not something that's going to change my comment as it relates to a single point of access serving a certain number of residential units and whether it's appropriate or not. Irrespective of what happens in that.
Yeah, I understand your position, but it gave me the opportunity to ask again.
So, so once the, once the applicant has estimated the amount of traffic that's going to be generated, they have to assign it onto the roadway. So how many trips are going to the north or south on Sandwich Road, how much is using Brick Hill Road and going through the intersections that we have mentioned? And so what the applicant has done, which is standard practice, is they look at US Census data for residents of the town of Fowl. So as a part of the census, you report obviously where you live. In most instances, you also report where you work. And so understanding that information allows us to say that these people being residents of the town, if they follow the same demographic profile that is reported as a part of the census, we can have a general understanding of where do you go to work? And then we look at that information to say, okay, if I work in Hyannis, how do I get there from this project site? And that allows us to trace trips from the project. Same thing, how many work on the other side of the canal and how do you get there? The census data allows us to do that and assess it then back to the project site and the roadway specific as to how you get there. Once we understand that information, the next thing is you look at how people are actually using the roadways. So we look at those turning movement counts to say, the census data would suggest this is the traffic pattern, but then when I look at existing patterns, it's saying local knowledge says, I don't go that way because of congestion, I go a different way. So the applicant's analysis based on the census data resulted in a certain trip distribution pattern. We looked at the actual traffic counts on the roadway, which suggested a different pattern, specifically as we looked at how people are actually driving, it suggested more traffic traveling north up to Route 151 and more traffic heading to the west along Brick Hill Road than what the applicant had estimated. And so we'd asked them to go back and look at the data, look at the existing traffic counts, and then take a look and see what happens if there's a redistribution of the traffic based on the existing traffic patterns. And they've done that analysis, that's a part of their response to comments later so that we can look at it. The variations that were shown were basically less than 15 vehicles during the peak hour. So basically moving traffic around. So if we had more traffic going north, it got subtracted, people going south, more going west versus west, the same thing. So you're just moving the traffic around and seeing what the impacts are. And so they have done that analysis and we had an opportunity to take a look at it. Didn't result in any significant variations in terms of impacts at specific intersections, but it did increase, let's say, left turn movements up at Route 151, which would be a critical movement at the signalized intersection. Or the same thing as you're looking to the south, the right turn movement to head toward the school, let's say, on Brick Hill Road. So there were some variations in the turning movements that happened, which do result in changes in traffic operations, but not significant enough to say that sticking with their distribution pattern, the impacts of the project would change significantly?
But in reference to that, the miscalculated, for want of a better term, traffic that is predicted to go north, it's actually going, most likely going to go south, and it's going to overburden that obviously overburdened intersection of 28 and Sandwich Road, which was completely left out of this study, which I just, I keep going back to it, but it's, it's very suspicious.
So again, back to the monitoring program, this is why you want to look at these distributions as well as part of monitoring. It's not just volume, but how are people actually using the roadways? And so that's something again to be considered at the appropriate time when we get to their developing appropriate recommendations. So the next thing that they, the next thing that they need to do is, you know, we collected this data, we've projected future traffic volumes, we're looking at crash histories, to now look at motorist delays and vehicle queuing at the intersection. So that's typically reported, as you probably frequently hear it, as levels of service. So what we do as traffic engineers is we come to you and we talk about, you know, levels of service at intersections, A, B, C, D, E, F. So just like the report card, we report those grades to you, and it is just like a report card where A is great, it's, you know, free flow conditions essentially, and F is a failing intersection, meaning it's over capacity. It is F, it can't add any more traffic through the intersection essentially without causing significant backup. So that would be a failing condition. And then we have gradations in between that. So an E, if you have an intersection or movement that's at E, that's the design capacity. So that's your glass that's full to the rim, and you put another drop of water and it starts to spill out when you get to F. So if you're at an E, you're at the design capacity, you can't add any more traffic without causing the intersection to run to failure. What is considered the limit of acceptable traffic operations is a D. And so D is your passing grade. If you're at a D, that's what's considered what's acceptable. Acceptable varies between everyone, everyone has a different consideration of what's acceptable. A D would mean that you wait about 35 to 40 seconds at a traffic signal or a stop sign. That's what has been deemed to be acceptable. So if we get below a D, then it's typically something where you want to mitigate. But again, it varies depending on what people perceive as being acceptable. In Boston, an E is acceptable. You're glad if you have an E at a location on the Cape, but it may not be acceptable at a D.
Again, this comes back to Sandwich Road and 28. I submit to you that at least on the weekends, that's already an E. So what are some of the things that we could potentially do to alleviate that? Is it too complicated to get into it now? But I think it, you know, first off, that needs to be rated, that intersection absolutely does, because this thing is incomplete, if it's, in my mind anyway, until it is. And then I suppose at that time you can tell us what we can do about it, but I guarantee you, on a Saturday, that's an E or even an F.
So it depends on, you know, the type of intersection. So at a signalized intersection, you could be as simple as retiming the traffic signal because it's not operating efficiently, but the analysis tells us, will tell us if there's any efficiencies to be gained by doing things like that. At an unsignalized intersection, then you start to look at adding lanes to try to reduce queuing at locations like that. In the extreme situation, that's when you look at a traffic signal, but again, that's an extreme situation where you have to meet certain criteria, the bar for those criteria is very high to be able to do that. But you know, so we need to see what's happening, and then based on what's happening and what the results are of the analysis, then you can develop, you know, realizations to try and make things like that. So that's something certainly that can be looked at. We looked at it at the locations that the applicant analyzed.
Yeah, I think, I'm sorry to harp on it, but I think it's glaring that it's not included if you're going to include 151 all the way up. I mean, that one should have been part of this, this study, and I, I consider it incomplete.
Yeah, and I, you know, I've obviously heard it loud and clear, and I'm sure the applicant has included it as well. So, you know, that is something that as you look, you know, one of the reasons we don't want to issue a second review letter is we want to make sure that we've got some feedback. And so that's something that we'll be considering as we provide that. Because it's, again, there's, there is standards that we apply to look at study area, but there's always the other standard, which is it's what's critical to the town to be looked at as well. So it's, you know, that's important as well. So in looking at the operations analysis that the applicant undertook, so as they've added the 120 peak hour trips to the roadway and then distributed, so there's 120 trips at the driveway, but then as we get away from the driveway, as the vehicles peel off on each of these roadways, the numbers get small. So you have 120 at the driveway, which you get away from the site, you don't have 120 going through Route 151 or, or a 28. It's a subset of the 120 peak hour trips. So the applicant has undertaken that assignment of trips and then looked at motorist delays and vehicle queuing at the intersections. And as we're looking at it, again, what we're comparing is no build versus build. So what we want to look at is what are the operating conditions under no build, and then are there any changes after you've added the project's traffic? And that tells us what the impact of the project is. So under average month conditions, the majority of the movements at the intersections operated at a D or better with the addition of project traffic. Again, that's average conditions. Under the peak summer month conditions, the majority of the movements are below 15. So we're an easy app, and that's not uncommon. So that's even before. So that's even before the traffic in the project is added. The project's impacts on any one movement at these intersections, again, no build versus build, what was shown is that comparing before and after the project's traffic, delays went up by no more than 26.1 seconds under average conditions. Under peak conditions, before and after, the delays went up by up to about 44 seconds. Again, that's representing the fact that under the summer month conditions, because we have intersections that are over capacity, the traffic can't get through the intersection. And so if we have delays under average conditions that are, say, 20 seconds, what you see is, as you look at that condition as related to summer conditions, the delays double as they relate to, um, projects impacts. And again, that's not something that's unexpected. I'm just giving the fact that in the summertime, we have congestion, you can't get all the vehicles through the intersection. So there's delays and those delays translate into backups. And so the increase in the delay as it relates to the project will also go up because you can't get cars through the intersection, even if you don't build the project, so the delays will only go up. Again, as we're looking at impacts, what they're required to look at is average, the average conditions. The peak summer month conditions are provided to you for context so that as you're thinking about how much worse could things be during summertime, this gives you some context as to how worst those conditions could be. So the delays go up by about 26 seconds. Um, the queuing at intersections goes up by about two vehicles. So what that means is that there's 10 vehicles in front of you today before the project, it'll be 12 vehicles in front of you if you're looking at that. The same would occur under summer conditions, even though you have larger delays, the queues go up by about additional two vehicles. However, the length of the queue before the project is much longer, um, that were measured. So if it was 10 under average, it could be 15 or 20 and now we're going to two to back on that is what that means. But again, measuring the relative impact of the project, what you see is the delays do go up substantially during summer month conditions. Queuing is just, is relatively low in those locations. Focusing on the driveway itself, so as we're looking at the access into the project, the driveway, um, in terms of vehicles trying to get out of the project, the driveway operates at a D, so it meets the acceptable criteria for that. Um, the queuing on the driveway is about two vehicles trying to get out of there. So, um, but again, that's looking at average month conditions. Summer month conditions, the delay on the driveway goes up, the queue stays about the same, which means the number of vehicles that stacks there is generally going to be about the same, but those vehicles may need to wait longer to try to get out of the driveway itself. So that's the analysis that was undertaken as part of the study. That's the results of the impact assessment that was undertaken. Now kind of focusing in on, we'll call them site plan related elements. First thing is the site distance at the driveway. So as we think about the access into the project site, um, as we're establishing where it's located along Sandwich Road, we need to make sure that you have sufficient sightlines so that if you're driving along Sandwich Road, um, you have no interest in, uh, no interest in the property of the project, you want to make sure that if you're driving along the road, you can see a vehicle that pulls up. Worst case scenario, the vehicle pulls out, stalls in the middle of the road, you want to make sure that you can see that vehicle and stop the car, that you're not going to have a collision along Sandwich Roads. We measure that site distance, which is the site distance along Sandwich Road. The other site distance that's evaluated is the site distance for someone exiting the project. So they're pulling out of the project site, they're come to a stop and they're looking to the left or right, they need to be able to see you as you're approaching them along Sandwich Road, um, and then be able to pull out of the property safely. And then in the ideal situation, accelerate so you don't have to slow down. So you want sufficient distance so someone can, you can see them, they can see you, they can then make the decision to pull out, they can also accelerate their vehicle. And if you're driving, you don't have to swing the brakes on because someone just pulled right up for you. So that's the second sight distance that we look at as it relates to the driveway. So the critical thing as it relates to sight distance is, um, the actual speed of traffic on the roadway, not the posted speed limit, but the actual speed that people are driving. So that's where that 24-hour, uh, count that was done comes into play. So as the applicant look at, looked at the speed that people are actually driving on the roadway, um, they recorded a prevailing travel speed of 48 miles an hour. So just shy of 50 miles an hour on that roadway. So as they're looking at the sight distances, as we're evaluating sight distance, you have to have minimum sight distance that's acceptable for 48 miles an hour, not the posted speed limit, but the speed that people are actually driving. And so at a 48 mile an hour approach speed, um, you need to have at least a minimum sight distance of 400 feet. That's the absolute minimum. So as long as you approaching the intersection can see something in the road at 400 feet at the driveway, and as long as when you're pulling out of the project, you can see a vehicle approaching you from 400 feet away, the intersection can operate safely. It meets all of the criteria to operate in a safe manner. Uh, the measured sightlines at the driveway are in excess of 600 feet. So what that says to us as it relates to the positioning of the driveway and the context along the roadway is that the sightlines meet, what, they actually seen what's required for safe operation in that intersection. That obviously has some caveats to it, meaning as, as we think about the site plan, just making sure that there's nothing placed in any of the areas that would obscure sightlines to get them to less than what these minimum requirements are. So we have some recommendations and things, uh, for revisions on the site plan to deal with that. But as it exists today, if you go out there and stand where the driveway is and kind of look to the left or right, uh, the sightline is greater than 600 feet. Um, the same thing as you're driving along the roadway, it's relatively level and flat as it relates to the roadway, so there's no horizontal or vertical curvature that is something that impedes those sightlines. So we've, we've verified that and we agree with that. And again, we've provided some recommendations as they relate to making sure that those sightlines are retained as the project, uh, potentially moves forward. The last set of comments that we have on the traffic study are recommendations. And so these are things that have been flushed out in the latest response letter and we've since gone in and dealt into that in a little bit more detail. So to provide to you specific recommendations that we think should be considered at those high crash locations, uh, to address the, um, the crash history at those locations. So we'll be providing that to you. I'm sure that'll elicit some, um, additional conversation, um, as well at those locations. We have recommended that they also implement what's known as a transportation demand management program. Although we do not at present time have bus service and do not have sidewalks or bicycle infrastructure, that doesn't mean that they won't be there in the future. So we want to make sure that the project, at least from the standpoint of making sure that the residents are aware of what's available, even if it's the ride services or the on-demand service, says through the Cape Cod Regional Transit Authority, that the residents are all made aware of that. They're also made aware of any infrastructure that the town may provide. So if in the future there's bike lanes or bicycle facilities, sidewalks, we want to make sure that the residents are all aware of those with, obviously the goal to have autos left at the site and people using either walking, biking or using public transportation. So the transportation event management program is geared towards that. It's informing the residents of what's available, the contact information for those opportunities that they have that information so that they, you know, hopefully can select an alternative mode of transportation to getting in their car.
Now, as, as far as that is concerned, um, the distance from Sandwich Road is, is a mile and a half or somewhat. Um, and there are stops for the, uh, regional transportation. There's one of them across from, uh, next to Tatican Apartments, I think it is, across from the liquor store. Um, sometimes the, the people that work in the store refer to it as the Copacabana. But, um, would, in these locations, would, if they don't have bicycle racks, would you, I mean, it would be a consideration to put them there so someone could safely bicycle to the thing, lock their bike up and then hop the bus to Hyannis and?
I think, I mean, I think it's, you know, that may be more of a, it may be more of a discussion with the Regional Transit Authority or with the commission as it relates to that, but it, you know, it's something that can be considered. We've certainly focused on the site and the site plan. When you look at our rec, our comments on the site plan, it's making sure that we have at least everything on-site to be sure that if you want to walk or bike, there's accommodations for you, those accommodations are safe in their community. And so we have all of that. As it relates to off-site, those, yeah, we probably, you know, those are conversations that.
Should be considered.
Yeah. I mean, I think they're considered as you're, as you're discussing some of the things. This is say, if we don't get bus service, you know, or even suggesting, make contact with the Regional Transit Authority and see how they, how they interested in providing service. Could they do, you know, Brick Hill Road spur where they come up and at least do something close to the site where you have a sidewalk and get you down to the intersection and they loop around and get back on 28? You know, is that feasible? You know, because there, there are things like that that could be some conversation.
It would be helpful.
So again, that, that's our review of the transportation assessment. We have received the applicant's response and as I mentioned, we'll, we'll be issuing a letter relative to that response. The last set of comments we have deal with the site plan. And I would say, you know, a lot of them are standard in terms of what we and I think the board would expect. Um, we do need a turning analysis for the fire truck moving and delivery van, the trash and recycling vehicle. I believe they provided the fire truck, but these other vehicles we need to see as well. The other vehicles, like, you know, usually what would be considered is to say the fire truck is the largest vehicle and it's going to require the most amount of maneuvering. Fire trucks can maneuver much easily, much more easily than a trash truck or a moving van because they're designed that way. You need to get into tight quarters to be able to fight fires. So we need these additional vehicles analyzed as well because they turn differently than the fire truck. The fire truck can turn, in most instances, quite tighter than a moving van or such. The other reason we need that analysis is because they're going to different places in the project site. A fire truck may be just circulating around, but the trash truck or the moving van has to get into a specific area and we need to see if there's maneuvering room for them to get to those specific locations as well. We've provided some recommendations as to specific notes on the site plans and other things that we want to see. Um, all I think are pretty standard to be added. As I mentioned, probably the most important thing as it relates to the site plan and as it relates to the transportation analysis is flushing out the access road. So I've kind of provided some, uh, standards as they relate to the access road. So those standards are, they're, they're two standards. There's the fire code. The fire code is probably, um, the most important standard that's applied to that access road. So I'm giving you some information as it relates to what's in the fire code. The fire chief has the ultimate authority. So they're the, as you look at the fire code, they're the authority having jurisdiction. So you always hear that A-H-J and that's what you'll see in the fire code. So the fire code provides the fire chief with standards, the fire chief makes the ultimate decision and they weigh specific factors as it relates to the project site. So as it relates to these standards, the, the typical standard that's applied for transportation planning purposes is a single means of access should serve no more than 30 dwelling units as it relates to residential projects. And that single means of access should be no longer than 1,000 linear feet. So we start with that and look at it and we say, okay, the access road is 1,600 linear feet between Sandwich Road and to, until you get to a point where the road diverges. So 1,600 feet gets us from Sandwich Road into the project site to the first point where a vehicle has a choice to go left or right, so divergence can happen at those locations. So in looking at that standard of no greater than 1,000 linear feet and 30 dwelling units clearly exceeds what those standards are. So now we look at the, at the fire code. And the fire code is really looking at, you know, the width of the roadway itself, um, as well as the number of units that are, that are applied. And so when we look at the fire code, they typically want to have two means of access. I mean, that's the ideal situation. But there are certain circumstances where you can't provide that and then the, the fire chief has the ability to be able to look at certain things that may be provided, you know, the height of the buildings, whether they're sprinkled or, sprinkled, things like that, they, they weigh in, in those decisions as to whether it's adequate. It was common that you could consider a boulevard type driveway to provide two means of access. So if you provided, let's say a 20-foot wide drive, 20-foot wide travelway with a median in the middle, and it was the ability of the fire truck to go on either side of that median, that you could say if one side got blocked, the fire truck comes in the other side, it jumps over the median and then continues into the project site. Um, so outside of Massachusetts, um, that's something that is, is allowed. Massachusetts provided, and they actually have an amendment to the fire code, um, that specifically prohibits consideration of a boulevard to serve as a secondary means of access, um, where that access serves a residential development or is, is the primary means of access to come into a residential community. Um, so what, what is shown right now in the site plan is a boulevard with a 20-foot wide access on either side of that and the ability of the fire truck to go from one side to the other. So we've just pointed these out, um, as to, these are what we look at as a standard. The fire chief is the authority having jurisdiction. So independent of what I say, I mean, what I apply are these things and just to make sure that, you know, you have that information, but ultimately it's the fire chief. So I, I think the critical things that we want to understand is, again, what's going to happen on those two lots? Is the ability, is there an ability to get to a secondary means of access in here? Does it involve those two lots? So I think that the questions are valid as it relates to that, but I think the important thing is the fire chief needs a little more. We can do all the traffic analysis that we do and if it's determined that there needs to be a secondary way to get in or out of here, that may change what we'd look at in the traffic analysis. Um, so I think we can do all of this analysis, but I think that that's probably the most critical thing that we need to add at the SRO because it affect, could affect even what we review. Um, so that's what we've pointed out in the site plan, it's probably the more significant thing that we think remains outstanding because we don't have responses to our analysis. But I think the, the items we identified other than that one are, are pretty straightforward.
What's the, uh, for my own adification, what's the, the logic behind the 1,000-foot limitation?
So it was generally if you have a, so that if you have a fire hydrant at the end of the road and the fire truck has a certain amount of hose that they carry.
Oh, gotcha.
And so what they wanted to make sure was at that 1,000 feet basically gave the ability, the fire truck standard carries, let's say, 500 linear feet of hose plus the length of the truck. And then they've got the connection to the truck. So they're hooking a pumper up so if they can drop, they go to the hydrant and, you know, and they start dropping the hose and they drive the truck down and the hose is coming out and they can get 500 feet from the hydrant to the truck, hook it up and then they hook down to the truck, the fire hydrant to be able to fight the flood. The 1,000 linear feet gave them enough coverage to hook to the hydrant, drive the truck, drop the hose and then be able to, you know, do fire hydrant operations.
So in the event of, I mean, we could condition multiple fire hydrants along the boulevard, if you prefer.
That's what the fire chief does. Because again, they're the authority having jurisdiction. So they weigh all of those things because, you know, these are rules, they're, they're good practices, but the specific site conditions are things that need to weigh. So, you know, it's not a case here, but if you had a situation where you've got a, you know, river or the bridge going over it, the fire chief may say, well, that's a condition I need to look at because if I get flooding, even if I determine that the hydrants are appropriate, what happens if that happens? They weigh all of that. It's professional.
Yeah. Well, they're not going to leave themselves short or long as the case may be here.
Absolutely. They absolutely won't.
Okay.
Safety is, you know, that's the, we were talking a lot about safety tonight and the same applies to the road and that's, that's something that's not compromised and the fire chief is going to look at that. You know, in our opinion, we, we also need that answer just as much as you do because it affects what we do in terms of assessing the project.
Okay.
So the very last thing that we looked at is the parking on the project site. So as I mentioned, the site plans show 100, 517 parking spaces or a ratio of 1.72 spaces per unit. Um, they proposed land bank 34 spaces, which would bring supply down to, um, 1.61 spaces per unit. And so we also, so we looked at that, we also looked at what, um, the zoning requirements are. And so the zoning requirements as we, as we looked at it were 1.5 parking spaces per unit to be provided for a dwelling unit having fewer than two bedrooms and two parking spaces per unit be provided for a dwelling unit having two or more bedrooms. So as the applicant, um, looking at the architectural drawings, and that's why we look at that, is to see what the number of bedrooms are. Um, the number of bed, the number of parking spaces based on the number of bedrooms that are, uh, being proposed is related to the zoning is the 517. So the 517 that's been provided meets what would be required under the zoning for the number of bedrooms that we have looked at on the, uh, architectural drawings.
Now, um, as far as the, uh, land bank spaces, I mean, who would determine, uh, whether they need to be utilized?
So the applicant's proposed that they would undertake that as a, during leasing, we would build it into the monitoring. So that's another data point to get. And so we would structure that because you want to know, and, and the way we look at it is basically if you were having vehicles parked in areas that they're not supposed to be parked, then that's.
Then we know.
Yeah. So it's something that'll jump out at you and say, okay, if I went there on a Saturday and it's busy and I see vehicles parked along the shoulders or there and the lots seem to be full, you know, those things are like, okay, well, we need to build more parking spaces. Um, so typically if you want to go with land banking and the land banking says, you know, that there's certain criteria that will be measured to determine when that need to be built, you build that into monitoring so that you get feedback as to it rather than a building inspector having to go out there and, or the fire department trying than a building inspector having to go out there and, or the fire department trying to get down there and say, I can't get the truck in there because, you know, this is your last.
And you'll be around to assist us with all of that.
Absolutely.
And realize we were going to work you as hard as we are.
No. That's all right. It's, you know, it's standard, this is a part of the review. You've got to look at all of these pieces and they are all interrelated. But as it relates to land banking, because that's something that needs to be decided as, you know, a waiver from the zoning, if you were to, to grant that, we have provided some additional information as it relates to the industry standards. So we look at, similar to the trip generation data, what, what typically is provided for parking ratios for multifamily residential communities that don't have access to public transportation and that walking and biking is not a primary mode. So looking at, you know, an auto-centric residential community, as you look at that data, what it suggests is that the average parking demand is, it's about 1.25, just a little bit shy of that. The peak parking demand is generally around 1.5. So a lot of times as we're doing reviews, if, if what we see is a parking supply of is at least 1.5 spaces per unit, it's within the range that we typically want to see. And that's actual demand on the ground as measured. So that's kind of the minimum threshold that we try to look at. So in looking at the data for similar communities, what it would suggest is that with the land banking, they should still have enough parking because it falls within the range, in fact exceeds what, with that 1.5 ratio. So it's something that we're comfortable, if the board's comfortable with granting that waiver, that the parking, with the land banking should be sufficient, but again tying that to the monitoring so that you've got some feedback as to whether it's working. But the applicant has fully designed a site frame of 517 spaces as zoning compliant, but what they're saying is based on their experience, they don't think they need the 517. So, you know, let us put that towards more open space on the project site. I think that's what they propose. So we're saying we, at least looking at the data, don't take objection to that. We think that the parking with the land banking and providing 1.61 would meet the parking demands of, of the project. But we did recommend that, you know, given kind of current trends, what we standard do with multifamily residential is you want at least two parking spaces designated as short-term parking spaces for Uber, Lyft, DoorDash because that's going to happen. And so if you don't provide parking for those type of accommodations on the site, they're going to park, they either not use a parking space, which is what we don't want, or they're going to use a resident parking space. And so we've suggested that, you know, they at least designate two parking spaces next to the building entrances as short-term, so such as 10-minute parking or something like that, so we can accommodate that. Or they can provide a different type of accommodation. We think it's important to do that because that's going to happen. So we should design for that. So I've taken up much of your evening. As I said, I've taken notes based on the comments that I have so far and we will work those into our letter and I will provide that letter to you in response to the recent information the applicant submitted. So you haven't answered any questions now or later on this evening?
Any questions currently, Jerry?
None.
Frank?
Yes, a couple. Let me just make this. Thank you. Let me just understand. We received this letter of January 18th from the Bowman Company and what you're going to send us tomorrow, the next day is there, is your response to this? Okay. So we already have this, but we don't have your response to it. Okay, so that's coming in. One, your remarks were quite comprehensive and I appreciate the detail that you went into. I had a couple of questions I was going to ask, but I think you answered them during the course of your presentation. But one of the things that I'd just like to make a comment and I live on a street that has about 70 single-family or residential dwelling units on it. And every morning and every afternoon, there's a big crowd at the end of the street of cars parked by the school bus and parents are waiting to drop the kids and get them on the school bus and get them off the school bus and take them home. In looking at the layout of this driveway entrance, I didn't see any accommodation anywhere for this kind of activity, which I think you can expect to happen. One of the concerns I have about this project is the access and you've addressed quite a bit of it, but this is something I think is going to happen and it looks to me like a problem that should be addressed and solved. You have any comment on that?
I do. The driveway as it's currently presented is, we will set aside the secondary access discussion. It's overdesigned. It's way too wide. The 20, you have 40 feet of pavement to move vehicles in two directions. It's excessive. So when you have 20 feet, there's enough room, 20 feet provides enough room where a vehicle can be parked on the side of the road. If it's still a car, there's plenty of room for that to happen. So as they've currently got the road designed, they can accommodate vehicles parking along the side of it. We might suggest that they mark those spaces. I think what we need to do is flush out what does that, what is it going to look like? And that, what that's going to look like is going to be completely dependent on what the fire chief says as to the access. And so it could also go back to, are we going to end up with a boulevard or not? If you don't have a boulevard, then, then you need to design for exactly what you said because the bus is not going to come into the site. It's going to pick up in Sandwich Road. So we need to have an area, because of the length of that road, we need to have a place where parents are going to pick up the end of the road because they're not going to, they're not going to send their children walking 600 plus feet.
No.
So as it is right now, we could, we could work with the 20 feet that they have and do mark to provide some parking areas for that. If we end up with something less than that, then we're going to need to provide points, but the design will look different. So that, that has to be considered. If you go back to a non-boulevard type design, going back to the fire code, it's 20 feet clear. So if we have a 24-foot road on the side and part of that's taken up by parking, we don't have 20 feet clear. So we have to design it 20 feet clear. So a lot of this is going to depend on what happens in that access. One way of saying, we have the design for it. It has the width right now, but we need to see what ultimately it's going to look like and it does need to have an accommodation.
Well, these cars that are parked waiting for the bus to come or go, when they, they have to turn around and it looks to me like they have to do a U-turn out into Sandwich Road, which I don't think is a very safe situation.
I, I agree with you. There needs to be an accommodation for this. The length of the driveway is such that you're going, that's what's going to have some people that park on the road and you need to have that accommodation. And again, we need 20 feet clear at all times. So looking at, the fire truck has to turn in and out. We need to have a combination of vehicles parking south of the road.
Now, the boulevard that you've been talking about is relatively short. It only goes up to the first curve, right? And thereafter, it's a single or a dual-lane street perhaps. Those curves are fairly sharp and have we determined that they can accommodate moving vans and all the other heavy-duty stuff that's going to be going in and out of there?
That's what we've asked them to look at. We need to see those turns because what we're going to be looking for is they can't swing so much. So as they're coming in, the vehicle maneuvering is going to show us that in fact the cars are so tight, the vehicle crosses so much, they can't have that happen. The length of that boulevard you had mentioned, it's not, you know, the length is set for a reason and it's to break out that 1,600 linear feet so that you get to that, as I mentioned, the 1,000 linear feet. So if you have boulevard for a certain distance, you need to drop the boulevard. What it's doing is, well, okay, now, now I'm meeting that standard because the boulevard is giving me a secondary means of access all the way so that after that point, I'm less than 1,000 linear feet. So therefore, I'm within that standard. So that is purposely set and doesn't extend nowhere. And that's the reason for that is to purposely break it up so that where you might have congestion and the potential for crash and blockage, that's dealt with in the first 600 or so linear feet where you've got, you add that boulevard. And then after that, you go a single lane and you're less than 1,000 linear feet after that. So then you get to go back to those standards where, okay, well, now I'm within those parameters. So it's purposely designed.
Okay, thank you.
And that was my concern, but to kind of piggyback on that, this has the potential to be one of the biggest bus stops on Sandwich Road. Is there going to be accommodations for the bus to actually pull off the road and load and offload?
What I would say from a safety perspective, and this may seem counterintuitive, you want them to stop in the traveling and put the stop sign out. You want traffic to stop and we want the bus to be vehicle visible. When you provide cutouts, it's open so people can pass the bus and they're not allowed to do that. So we, we generally, as much as no one wants to get stuck behind the school bus, it's safer if you get stuck behind the school bus and the bus is visible and right under the road.
Okay. Secondly, now, we're going to get another reply from Bowman?
They haven't received, they haven't received my letter. So they've responded to my letter and then I'm going to provide a response to their letter and then they will follow up.
Okay. Now, this is actually the size of the packet that we got from Bowman. I, I don't read well on the computer, so I need it all printed out. Could you perhaps ask this gentleman to do us the courtesy of numbering these pages? I knocked it off the table and it, it, it didn't work well. And I've never encountered anything with this number of pages that weren't numbered, it seems, so.
I know the applicant's traffic is, you know, taking notes as well.
Yeah, well, he's taken that note years ago.
You could add page number to P D S O, something like that. A heavy list of it. The document I reviewed would be a penises.
Yeah, well, I, I like it printed out in my hand and, you know, pages numbers would be nice.
Okay. Through you, Jerry. Did you find the guest parking adequate?
The parking ratio that they're providing includes guest parking. So the 1.6 is, it's built into those numbers. So they're not designating specific guest parking. They might actually buy the clubhouse, but the, when we look at the parking, it's, it's total unless they're going to, you know, carve out when you do reserved parking, but where you're standing, looking at the plan, there isn't reserved parking. So it's, you know, people park where, where they find space.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Any questions?
I don't have one at this time, but I would just point out for everybody that Mr. Dirk is actually the peer reviewer. So he's functioning for the board and we're a little bit backwards in that we will hear from the applicant's traffic person next, just so that people understand.
Okay. Right. Thank you. Stay over on, we might have some additional questions for you.
Thank you.
Thank you. The applicant?
Jason Adams from Bowman, applicant's traffic engineer. I feel that there's been a comprehensive discussion already tonight, so I guess I would offer mostly to the board if they'd ask any questions of, of our project team in addition to what has been asked of your own peer reviewer. If you'd like me to give any kind of summary, I certainly can. However, I think that there's been quite a bit of summary, which, which has been great discussion. We have certainly taken notes. We'll certainly get those pages numbered for you and, you know, happy to respond and continue the conversation as we receive additional comments from your peer reviewer, as has been greatly discussed.
I think I pretty much covered everything concerned that I had, but the, the major concern is, is the intersection of Sandwich Road and Route 28. I think that's a glaring omission and I, I really think that needs to be addressed and, and rated for, or edification, whatever. I mean, it just, it seems necessary and I would have expected it to be in here.
Understood.
And other than that, and the page thing would be great. It was just crazy this afternoon. It didn't work well.
Jerry, any questions?
Not at this time. I think we're good enough.
Frank?
Yes, reviewing your, your report, I know you're, you're going to do some work at Sandwich Road and Route 28 and report back to us on that at the request of Mr. Finneran, but all the other intersections that you analyzed are signalized intersections. And if I look at, just if I may summarize, and I'm going to ask you if I'm correctly summarizing, you're saying in your report that the signal, signalized intersections and the one you're going to look at is not signalized. Basically, the impact of the additional traffic from this project will be handled adequately by the existing signalization?
Correct. Certainly there are improvements that could be undertaken. I think Mr. Dirk spoke to those a bit.
Right.
I, I know that the town has applied for funding for improvements to specifically the Burkell and Sandwich Road intersection. So not to say that the intersections themselves are completely adequate, but what we're trying to do is evaluate the impact specific to this project at those intersections.
As they exist today?
As they exist today, correct.
All right. Thank you.
Can you address the bus stop question?
I, I mean, I think that I would be saying that I'm, I'm in agreement with the conversation that has taken place. I think it's something that our project team can take these comments back, look to improve the facilities available. As Mr. Dirk said, there is sufficient width right now, but, but certainly improvements can be done along the property to provide greater accommodation for, for bus stops in the future.
Because all the kids that go, that are going to live there are all bused?
Understood.
No, no, no. Okay. That's all I have. Thank you. Anything? Okay. Well, no further questions. Thank you. We'll move on to public comment. Please state your name and let us know your thoughts.
Julie Kellner for Old Dock Road. I have two brief points that I'd like looked into. One is the Thomas Landers intersection there and how that will be impacted, especially if traffic is going to be increasing at the lights and things on the ends. There's no light there. It's a back way for all of the west side of town to get central. So that wasn't addressed, but it's a major thoroughfare on that side of town that will be impacted and utilized both by the develop, those in the development and those in that area. The other question is really about, we just invested as a town in putting a fire station up on Sandwich and the response times that were estimated by choosing that location impact both North and West Falmouth, which are expected to see also an issue with their fire departments. As you know, one of them's already not staffed full-time. They serve that whole area near the high school, et cetera. Both of these two fire departments are expected to be serving that. With West Falmouth not staffed, it is going to be coming from that Hatchville location. So I think we really need to understand the impacts of response time for that whole part of town, given the location that was chosen. Sandwich was chosen because it could be accessible. If we're now impacting it, you know, a lot, that's going to, we already aren't meeting our response times. So I'd love that fire department to really weigh in and, and work with the traffic assessment that we just heard to really understand the likelihood of, of how much slower that already delayed response time will be, please.
Thank you.
I was on the committee that located that station and it's located perfectly and it's only going to improve response times. Good evening.
Tommy Zine, 36, Captain Boenburger Lane. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Board members, and thank you to our community for your support tonight. I'm requesting a little extra time, just under five minutes.
Okay.
I have four talking points. Others after me will talk traffic. Number one, to all the parents with school-aged children, school redistricting, it's a possibility your children could be moved because of the scope and size of this project. Number two, I reread the Kecard Commission's comments dated November 16th, 2023. We hope the board will consider taking the necessary steps to implement an archaeological survey as suggested by the Kecard Commission. There is natural history and cultural heritage located on the 30-acre parcel. Earlier tonight, Mr. Calhoun mentioned the shade study and working groups. I'll address both now. Number three, the results from a shadowing study dated January 3rd, 2024 were completed. One day from each season, spring, summer, winter and fall were chosen as testing dates. In the computer model, most abutters were not impacted by the shadows. The computer simulation was completed for December 21st at 4:00 PM. There's one home completely covered in solid darkness during the coldest and shortest period of the year. That address is 36 Captain Boenburger Lane. That's my home. I will read the architect's conclusions. In quotes, he said, "Shadows will only be cast upon the abutters' property late afternoon, December 21st at approximately 4:00 PM," end quote. The architect's report implies that the shadowing impact of a four-story building is only one day out of the year on December 21st. This is misleading. After late November, the shadows' length increases incrementally day by day. After late November, the shadows length increases incrementally day by day, leading up to December 21. After December 21, the shadows length decreases incrementally day by day until spring. This means my home will be impacted by various degrees of shadowing each day for weeks, not just one day, like suggested in the conclusion. Shadowing poses two serious problems. The first problem is electricity. I depend and pay for solar panels to lower my electric bill. The solid black shadow created by Saxon Partners' four-story apartment building during the coldest and the darkest weeks of the year will negatively impact my efforts at conserving electricity and energy for the environment. The second problem is health and well-being. There are cases in Falmouth where building renovations have been modified or flat-out denied because the shadows block the sunlight to neighboring homes. Removing sunlight from a person's home has been associated with depression. This can cause seasonal affective disorder for some people. My fourth talking point and last, this is the most important, and I hope it will resonate with the board. I wanted to point out the brief conversation the ZBA engaged in on December 21 about breaking up into smaller working groups. We understand why you are considering working groups. We do. But we hope you will listen to our request and not proceed forward with that idea. We, as a community, feel that open disclosure is needed. Saxon Partners' proposed project at 375 Sandwich Road should be kept in a public hearing because there are still important topics Saxon Partners needs to share with the public. Our group saved Sandwich Road now. We have specialists and professionals seated in this audience. Some will talk at the podium, while others remain seated and listening. The rest of our professionals are watching intently on public television. It's for these reasons we need to continue challenging Saxon Partners through public comment and allow it to be submitted into the record. This can only be achieved. Thank you. Thank you. This can only be achieved if there are no working groups. Mr. Chairman and Board members, I want to end by thanking you for paying close attention to these details because they matter. We appreciate your leadership on these issues. Thank you.
I can comment that I'm entirely against working groups, and I commented before, similar.
Good evening, I'm Betsy Glack, I'm from Precinct 6. I'm on the west part of town, and I have two comments. One is just sort of a back-of-the-envelope, literally, calculation. So I looked up the Cape Cod Commission does summer traffic counts, and so for the three summers, 2010, the traffic count, and this is in June, two days of traffic counts, Sandwich Road had approximately 12,400 cars. In 2013, in August, 13,250. In August of 2017, approximately 12,000 cars. If you, if you go back to what was stated today, that there'd be 1,300 people per day, I mean, from traffic, from this project per day, that's a 10% increase in traffic. The second point I want to make is, as you're all aware, you know, I live on the west side of town. I live off Quaker Road, and there's, you can do a traffic count on Quaker Road. You can even do a traffic count on 28A. If you consider Sandwich Road is the geographic center of Falmouth, it brings all the traffic coming in from Falmouth, I mean, coming into Falmouth. It's the, it's the artery to go north and south. And as was pointed out earlier, it's not just Brickhill and Road, it's also Thomasby Landers. It's the artery from east to west. So what that means, in addition to the number of vehicles, is, and I don't know how this is done, I'm not a traffic engineer, I don't do these kinds of studies, but I am doing the study on Thomasby Landers Road right now, and if you've ever stood at the Kunmesse, where it crosses the Kunmesse River and watched the traffic there, as those of you who live in town, Thomasby Landers Road is where all of our gravel and sand and cement comes from. In addition to that, you have landscape trucks that use that. I mean, it's the, it's, as was stated, it's the route from west to east. And you also have school buses, as has been discussed, fire trucks now, and large, what do I want to call them, tractor-trailer trucks for delivery. So it's not just this traffic is cars. There's a lot of heavy traffic on the road, and I don't quite know how that's addressed, but I'm counting on all of you to come up with a clever solution, mitigation solution for that. So thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Tanya Lindowski, 363 Sandwich Road. Appreciate the gentleman from the peer review and the time from the ZBA. I will not reiterate my wildlife and scientific concerns outside of some of the sidebar issues dealing with roadways, however, traffic focused. I did appreciate your comments this evening, sir, in regards to local knowledge. 25 years I've lived in the same space, so I understand what that traffic impact is. I also worked as a police officer, so, in my earlier years, so I understand what traffic mitigation and first response actually deals with. I was the one that initiated actually pulling our mailboxes 20 years ago back onto the east side of the road because I was taking my life into my own hands to get my Shaw's flyer. So we moved on and working through that, I could no longer actually pull. I used to be able to back in my horse trailers and living trailers into my place. That's no longer even possible. We're talking about a 48 mile an hour average speed. I wish it were only, it used to be a 35 mile an hour road when I was there, it was an oil road even before, before we stopped. Now, we put in different mitigations in order to help folks not have these type of accidents. Unfortunately, that really hasn't, hasn't helped in a lot of ways. I have been the first responders just by being a resident to fatalities as well as regular accidents, if you will, from, from cars to bicyclists on Sandwich Roads and Brickhill intersections. I think the 1.72 to 1.6 per vehicles per space is kind of ridiculous. I know everybody that would actually be living in this type of facility would not be taking the local bus to go to Shaw's. They will probably be taking their higher-end vehicles in order to get there. Having a four-lane boulevard that goes into a two-lane country road is sort of like the same issues that we're dealing with the bridge and the rotaries. It just doesn't always work when you're having a lot of influx in one space, so you have to kind of slow it down. I appreciated the comments in regard to going from 10 to 12 vehicles for the stop intersections. That's 20% increase, if you're actually looking at the math, so that's huge. When you're looking at a space that's, we're already having issues. So I'm very concerned about some of those things. And right where this boulevard is located is on a straightaway. I mean, I know that because I've been passed on a double yellow line by motorcycles, by cars, trucks, doesn't even matter. So it's, it's really, yes, you do have that 600 feet on a dry day with nobody that's speeding, and you might be able to stop and not keel on something. That's really not the reality that we're dealing with, but I understand that you have to work with statistics that are given. Appreciate that. Some of the other spaces or concerns that I have that the board member had brought up was the intersection at 28 Sandwich Road. I absolutely could not agree even furtherly with that intersection, and I'd like to add a couple of spaces of concern as well. Thomas Landers and the Sam Turner with the John Parker intersection, you're taking, I drive that, and I have for 20 years. My office was, my lab was in Wood's Hole, now it's at Technology Park. I drive that daily, four years, decades. I know exactly when to kind of slow down at least 100 yards in advance because you don't know what's going to pull out because you can't see. And you might have a tractor-trailer or a cement truck, and we know how many times they've even gone top over on that intersection. So those are real honest concerns that I have with that intersection. I mean, and going across to get to John Parker, you know, they're trying to do this little zigzag, and if you're adding more traffic and speed, that's going to be a situation. The other situation or intersection of concern is the Tanglewood intersection. They're already backed up. I see them when they have the buses, four, five, 10-plus cars, trying to wait to get out patiently sometimes, and sometimes not so much, you know? And then they're trying to deal with the Sandwich Road traffic. Carriage Park Road, another situation that we've had a lot of really awful intersections, or accidents, rather. Same thing at the 151 intersection. I remember the multiple fatalities that we still have, you know, memorances there for. So what is the cost exposure? If we're actually going to be changing some of these things, if we have to mitigate some of the actual structural components, who's paying for that? Is it going to be Saxon? No. It'll likely be the taxpayers. The road is only so wide. You can't move every single light pole and electrical pole in that space. You'll never make it safe for bicyclists. You've seen the letter that was given to the board in regards to pedestrians and the bicyclist association in Falmouth. It's not a safe space to really do that, and to add more traffic and more speed and more problems is only going to create more issues. I wouldn't want to be on that side of the lawsuit if somebody was to be able to add additional issues to the space. Crash reductions, as we were talking about, yes, there are mitigated issues. Yes, those numbers did fall from 2020, but what happened in 2020, we had spoken. All right? So we were driving, we're all teleworking, it's wonderful. However, that, I mean, that's a real, that's a reality that we have to add into our scientific study. So I just, I don't want to take too much of your time, but these are some of the things. We had another person that spoke earlier that's also left me a note that I'd like to add in, please, in regard to having the emergency issue point of having a stoplight or if there's going to be room, a room or space on both sides for a fire truck to get by in the margins, or we may be actually stuck in traffic. You know, buses turning around, like I said, I don't see a lot of people from this high-end establishment taking a, taking a bus to go to Shaw's. And on closing, a little off-topic, but I did want to say, I also very much oppose having working groups. I think we should stay open. I appreciate the transparency, and I really think that helps us, grassroots, and people from our agencies that are also, you know, online and watching all of us speak. So thank you for your time, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Kevin Heffron, 127 Meredith Drive, and a DOT, Mass. DOT study from five-year data from 2013, 2017 indicated that Sandwich Road is two times the Massachusetts crash rate. So the average Massachusetts crash rate was 0.58 to 0.77. Sandwich Road at 151 is 1.68, and that was a 2018 Mass. DOT study. Cape Cod Commission did an October 2022 study, and they found that at 151, the Sandwich Road crash rate is 1.778. So that's an increase from what was found in 2013, 2017. And the Cape Cod Commission also discovered that the Brickhill intersection had a crash rate of 1.56, sets two to three times the state average. I emailed that document to Norine during the courses meeting, said something you can review if you like. Also, we know that it's not just 300 units, but they have, of course, 600 and 900, so you can double or triple the impact this will have over the next five years. And also, people here in town know that in the summertime, all summer long, we don't have one to one and a half cars per unit. These are two, three, and four-bedroom units. You know what it's like 4th of July weekend, you know it's like Labor Day weekend. You're going to have a ton of cars, 517 spaces will not be enough. They will be moving out into the roadway. It's inconceivable that you'll have one or one and a half cars per unit. We also know that during the school year, it's really a 6 to 9 and 2 to 6 p.m. very heavy traffic following the time. But during the summertime, it's after 9:00 to 10:00 in the morning, and it's all day long, not just the rainy days. So it really is a continual issue after 10:00. If you want to go shopping or go down to Stop and Shop, do before 9:00 in the morning. After that, you're stuck. Sandwich Road and 28, it's a disaster. Amazingly, not a lot of crashes there, but it is backed up intensely. And it's not just the antiquated lighting structures at Brickhill and Sandwich Road. If you travel on Brickhill towards the high school, 10 minutes after sunrise, you will have going east to west about a one-second interval when it's a green light. So the sunrise has a big effect upon our modern light-sensitive lighting systems. So it's not just the antiquated systems. If you drive 10 minutes after sunrise, you'll have a big issue by the high school. It's a big backup. So this is a matter of massive increase in vehicles. It's going to be disaster for Falmouth. It's going to impact firefighting capabilities. It's going to impact the entire town. So thanks so much for having us, so convenient. I greatly appreciate you having us here, and thank you for peer review. Appreciate you very much.
Thank you.
Joe LaMay, I live on Meredith Drive in Tanglewood. Addressing the school bus issue, Mr. Duffy pointed out the parents who are concerned with their kids and watch them get on the bus, make sure they get to school. Tanglewood has the same thing, but it's only for the Voke and the high school. The lower grades, the bus actually comes into our neighborhood and goes around, so we don't have this crowd of cars up front. So my suggestion to this project is, it would be really great if there was a bus stop on the north best corner of your closest building. That way, the bus can come into the neighborhood, pick up the kids, have enough of a turnaround space that the long buses can not have to go around the whole neighborhood, just turn. There are two benefits to that. One, you won't have a whole bunch of cars at the front that you have to manage. And two, you get the bus off Sandwich Road, and 600 cars behind the bus can take off, apparently at 48 miles an hour, and get where they're going. So that was a tremendous benefit in Meredith and Tanglewood was the large crowd behind the bus, the bus turns into the neighborhood, and then that crowd goes. If you happen to be, the verb is school bust, by the high school bus, and you're at the end of Tanglewood, you might just turn your car off. The 600 cars are not going to let you in. And then you're patient, and they all go away, and you can go. But having an internal school bus stop would be beneficial to the students, the parents, and the traffic on Sandwich Road. As far as the peer review guy, what a fantastic presentation. Between May and October, I will not go south on Sandwich Road further than Brickhill Road, ever, except at like midnight. That's okay. But yeah, in your normal day, between 7:00 in the morning and 8:00 or 9:00 at night, I will not go south. I will not go to that intersection, Sandwich Road and 28. I just don't do it. I take other routes. There's one other intersection I'd include in that is, if you go Sandwich Road left on Brickhill, so that would be east, to get onto 28, you get onto Hawksburg. Oh my God, don't do that. Don't do that ever shower. Okay? There's so many cars trying to take a left that even if you're trying to take a right, you can't get up to the intersection. And if there's a box truck, you got the intersection, you can't see the traffic. So that intersection should be included in your study. Also, of the cars that are not like me and do go south on Sandwich Road, while they, you know, merge into 28, the next intersection I'd like you to briefly look at is the Stop &amp; Shop light that's Wish to Court and Jones Road. Okay? So that, I would say at least 85% of the cars that go south on Sandwich Road end up at the Stop &amp; Shop light. I'm making up 85%. Some of them go to the post office, some of them go to McDonald's, but you know, some of them turn into the mall, some of them go to that liquor store we talked about. Okay? But about 85% end up at the Stop &amp; Shop light, and gosh, you wait, oh, you think, six, seven, eight, nine, green, red light cycles, we get through that thing in the summer? So that should be included. It's a little further away, but one, I don't know how you study this intersection, there are people who don't realize you cannot come down Trotting Park Road, get to 28, and take a left. I don't know why they try doing that. But if I come down Trotting Park Road and I want to take a right, and there are two guards trying to take a left, I can't get to the intersection. So that one, I don't know how you study that one, but an additional crowd coming up Sandwich Road onto 28 will make those left turns a little more difficult. We already pointed out all the other intersections north on Sandwich Road. People do what they do there, you have to be careful. Now, one other one to point out is, when I was younger, I rode my bicycle 200 or 300 miles a week. For people who are old enough, that's about all of us, you remember Auget in Mashpee? I worked at Auget. I rode my bike up Sandwich Road, across 151, around the rotary, and up 28 to Auget. I was an amazing bicycle rider. I'm surprised in my life. But I would not do that now. I still ride my bike. I'm so much more careful on Sandwich Road. I really would like to challenge to do something about widening that road and making bike lanes, but that's millions of dollars, a bunch of stuff. So all these points, being in Tanglewood, trying to take a left, is difficult, not impossible. When you add 10 or 15% more cars, it'll be more difficult, but not impossible. But that bus thing, I think that would be really a good improvement, have an internal bus stop and allow the traffic on Sandwich Road to move instead of being stopped by a bus. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Hi, Suzanne Egan, 16 Sunset Drive, East Falmouth. I'm on the road all the time for my job. I'm in healthcare, and I do home care. So I, and I live there, I know that track. It's crazy, year-round, worse in the summer. I know every back road, I know every slide turn, I use waves if I don't know. And I have lived on Cape Cod, well, I've lived in this house since 98. I have seen the increased traffic. I'm a very good driver. I have been run off the road, I've been hit four times on that road. Four times I've been rear-ended. Because I had to stop and people running into me because of the bad traffic. It's functionally deficient, Sandwich Road at this point, because of the increased traffic. And then you have the flooding spots, like at the bottom of the hill by John Parker and Turner Road, it floods. So then people are trying to drive around in the other lane, they get past the flooding, and there's oncoming traffic. It stinks. You're out of spot, and where Sandwich Road hits 28, horrible, rear-ended there. And then all the ones with John Parker, because they're trying to cut through, go that way instead, another horrible turn. Traffic study needs to be done a little more, with a little more local化 than that. But then there is all the different pollutions from this increased traffic that's going to come from these increased cars. And most households that have two adults that work have two cars. They don't have 1.5. They have two cars. So that's another problem. I think, you know, these builders, 40B, you get around a lot of things, I know this, but you need, they need to be held accountable to fix some of these deficiencies, instead of throwing it on the taxpayers to pay for these, to fix this road, put a bike lane in, put better traffic lights in, and fix all the deficiencies. If they want to throw 500 to 600 people easily onto that road, it's, it's a terrible, terrible thing. And then you have, you know, we have one aquifer, you know, we already have problems, we're talking about increasing our septic. I know they're going to have their own septic system, but those people will have all the pollutions from their cars, they're dumping it here, going there. I mean, they're not just sitting in their house and using that little septic. So that's all has to be taken into it. We have a very fragile environment here right now. So we really have to make them, if you are going to go for it with a four-story buildings in a residential, mainly one to two-story area, if you're going to dump that on us, you have to make them financially responsible to fix these problems. Thank you.
Paul Donovan, 21 Pitch Pine Lane. Sorry for the attire. I wasn't planning on speaking tonight, but as my civic duty, I feel that I should. Not only as a budding neighbor to this project, but as a career firefighter for the last 16 years. I've worked in large cities with workforces larger than the entire Cape Cod. I've worked on, in Norfolk, Virginia, over 660 firefighters in one department. I recently just left the job after eight years of, in Metro West, and now I am a career shift commander down as a firefighter and shift commander at an advanced fire department close by. I just want to stress many things. One of the precious, most, most precious things that, that the Cape Cod community has or lack of is water. We're both drinking water, water for firefighting. Our particular township that I work for, close by, we shuttle water everywhere. We're the masters of shuttling water, thousands and thousands of gallons. My concern is, is have they done a drinking water consumption study on this whole project? That would be a biggie. I've heard the numbers of 30,000 gallons just for drinking, showering, et cetera, toiletry. And then I heard that was pretty shy, it should normally be about 50,000 a day. So I'd love to see a study on that. I'd love to see a study on the septic return back to nature and how that water gets recycled back into our natural resources and ponds for additional drinking water again. And then, of course, there is the fighting, fighting aspect of it all. Coming down that boulevard, peer review, I would check with the authority, the AHJ, go for a ride in a, in a ladder. I am a ladder operator. You come on down to my department, I'll take you for a ride. So operate a ladder to, just to be a minute part of, say, catastrophic fire, would take up just the ladder company itself, one ladder, needs both this middle row and all the way back for stabilizing bars and the safe area around it. Now, you also have to consider, when you're coming down here, we're not going to be jumping mediums, or mediums, excuse me, and the first lay that we go in will probably block the road completely. I was on duty and I've done, well, I happened to do Station 5 coverage in, what is it, East Falmouth, the night that we called the May Day. And there's no better department than the Falmouth Fire Department, and it's men and women that serve that. With that said, I was also there and did your station coverage on the firearm main street. And I know how many fire apparatuses are on the scene, how much it blocks up in bottlenecks in area, and how much water that they, that they have to extinguish the fire and then keep on cooling down. And where that water goes, back down into the neighbors' yards, back down into the septic system, back down into the natural resources of our drinking water again, all those toxins. So the other thing is, is that when on approach to a building of this magnitude, and that's just one, we're talking about three, you know, three large, firefighters aren't going to get close to that with the, with the building constructions these days, four stories, and you have your roof. Ladder companies won't have the reach to even get to the third floor from where your parking lot is. I've seen your drafts, and, and I looked at it, and I smirked, and it's just, it's too far away. So that's an impossibility. The other thing is, is a collapse zone. We're trained not to get close, one and a half, the distance of one and a half, the height of the building. So, because if the building does collapse, you don't want to be around for that. It could be catastrophic casualties. So firefighters are trained to stay at least one and a half times the height of the building back, which then again, puts your reach to try to save lives at risk. So I'd love to do an extensive study done on that, too. Talk to the fire chiefs. They're phenomenal people with great knowledge, and like I said, there's no better department than Falmouth Fire Department. And that's all I just wanted to raise those concerns, and when you're doing the engineering and construction, just, you know, be mindful of all that and the bottlenecking. That's it.
Oh, yes, of course. For the record, I'm opposed to the Saxon development, the 40B site plan, as filed with the CBA in mid-October in 2023. Now, there's more recent files on, on plans on file. I'm not aware of them at this moment, at this writing. And I've been looking at the site plan layout for a long time. The layout, as we all know, it just packs multiple large buildings inside a square perimeter road, which is pushed tightly against two long borders and, and against the eastern most border of a long rectangular parcel. And even though power lines span the western part diagonally, the plans do have space centrally for repositioning buildings, parking lots and garage structures. There's space there to make them go more in the middle of the parcel and away from the borders. I'm pointing this out in order to develop my requests and those of neighbors. We would feel much more comfortable having much wider lot line setbacks along the, at least two of the four borders of the parcel. I'm wondering why Saxon has not yet modified their site plan in October, following so many of our concerns about the loss of our backyard privacy, the proximity of the towering buildings, the large windows that are within the line of sight, annoying night lighting, parking lot views, car, I mean, it goes on. The Boston Affordable Housing Office, which granted the preliminary eligibility letter, PEL, in August, I feel that they've presumed an expectation that Saxon is supposed to address specific concerns from the neighbors, including environmental impact, and they're supposed to implement genuinely accommodating plan changes in order to move forward. And from my perspective, Saxon still has a lot more mitigation to do. And the illustration, which often gets printed in the newspaper, depicts this olive-green area suggestive of open space, but however, if you look at the permit application drawings, that same area is labeled proposed lot two. It takes up almost half the parcel. Sure would be nice to know for sure what the future intention is for that space. I mean, is it, is it purposely being held aside to accommodate the future sets of buildings? Maybe for Phase Two or maybe for the other 300 units? Okay. But likewise, the adjacent 13-acre gravel pit, well, this was previously described by our Falmouth Cape Cod Commission as ideal habitat and nesting grounds for the eastern box turtle, a state-protected species. What if this might end up as a single-family home development in the future? As a matter of fact, that possibility was actually mentioned in a traffic study report under the T4 comment in a letter sent to Noreen, which I read, it was posted online, that they've actually added in some cars to the, about, it's assuming that it's going to be developed someday, and so that was thrown into the report. What's dawning on me is this, it's a distinct possibility here that soon, there won't be any natural open space left anywhere on the combined lots, those 43 acres, following Phase One build. The time, I think, is now to establish these wider setbacks along the perimeter borders during this preapproval stage. So the site plan, you know, as I've said before, negatively impacts a couple of groups. Two, I'm speaking about our, a group called, I call Wildlife Habitat, and the other group is the Abutters. So the Wildlife Habitat, that's, I put two words together, but it's the mammals, the reptiles, the ground birds, and the tree nesting birds. But they stand to be displaced and lost, and they're going to lose out much, if not all, of their natural habitat on this property. Saxon's only allowing 10-foot natural setbacks, essentially an alley between the back walls of their garage accessory structures and the neighbors' backyards. I'm not referring to the large buildings themselves, I'm referring to the accessory building setbacks, to be clear. But I, this is completely inadequate for establishing a core wide enough to support natural vegetation and wildlife activity of any significance. The animals need to circumvent the development around the outer perimeter. They need to move to and from the Coonamessit River Greenway. They need to find shelter, nest, forage, and hunt. They're there, okay? And all trees on the Saxon side of the alley, this 10-foot corridor, of course, would be subject for removal at the developer's discretion. So we can't count on those, okay? And all the, there's such a wide array of species on that habitat, they've been there for a very long time, and they deserve representation. They can't speak for themselves, and I want to speak up for them here. The other group impacted by the design of this parcel as filed are the, many of the 93 or so Abutters, and they're very vulnerable to having their privacy impacted in some way. We've all heard about this. But especially those Abutters with backyards at the south border, which would be Meredith's Drive, or at the east border of the build site. And those would include the Harris Hill Peterson LLC Abutters, the Meredith Drive North LLC Abutters. So the Meredith Drive Abutters at the south border would greatly benefit with a sideyard setback of no less than 100 feet, and I, I said 100 feet, of natural uncut trees and vegetation. I don't know if that's possible, but if that was a no-clear setback corridor, it would follow the straight boundary lines right behind, straight up Meredith, behind homes, and it would create natural light filtering privacy buffer. Of course, we know that's going to be beneficial to the Abutters, especially those on Meredith who have backyards that are going to be facing the large buildings or the backs of the garage accessory buildings, parking lots, or the trash dumpsters. So likewise, I want to talk about the east border. Those Abutters would really benefit if Saxon would create Those abutters would really benefit if Saxon would create a rear yard setback of no less than 200 feet of natural uncut trees and field. My rationale in requesting this setback is multifold. I think it's achievable because the shape of the parcel is rectangular, and I think it could accommodate that change this way in the layout, by shifting the buildings towards the center, and it wouldn't have, it would have minimal impact. And having that setback from the homes would completely eliminate the seasonal shadowing issues created by the towering I building number five. I read the shadowing report. The setback of 200 feet would protect some of the last remaining undisturbed old growth forest and habitat from being completely demolished during construction. This treeless dirt, if it was disturbed, is vulnerable to surface erosion, especially if there's any sloping topography in the area. So if we could preserve, Saxon could preserve those larger trees and their underground root systems, those roots absorb surface, they absorb groundwater, they anchor the soil, and they do protect against erosion. So the east end of the parcel is where the wildlife might even pause before continuing the various routes to the Coonamessit River, which is very close by. And thus, wildlife would benefit with more tree cover at the east border. My goal of suggesting these changes is for, I would like Saxon to attempt to protect existing wildlife. So I would like to ask them if they could provide as much functional habitat space along the south and east borders as possible, while at the same time to preserve a wider natural growth privacy buffer for the abutters. And if that plan's okay, both the south border and the east border setbacks should, I would feel that they should be made a permanent mandate. And I think, feel that they should be monitored by the ZBA or other town boards to prevent infringements from occurring during any future building expansion or even after a change in property ownership. We should protect those setbacks. We should work on the setbacks right now. So I believe that Saxon can address both concerns about the loss of habitat and about the loss of privacy with the abutters, simply by shifting the buildings more centrally within the parcel and by bringing facing buildings closer together. I'm asking for the 100-foot for Meredith, and I'm asking for the 200-foot for the east end. Not sure if that's doable, I'm not an architect, but I believe the attempt should be made because I think it would solve a couple of problems. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Mike Greenold from Seventeen Sandpoint Shores. Couple of things that I heard tonight I wanted to add to. In my opinion, Falmouth's a gateway community, particularly to the islands. In the traffic study, they didn't really talk about that, how many people come to Falmouth to get on the ferry, to go over the Martha's Vineyard. That exaggerates the traffic problems that we have now even greater because we have more and more people. We're not talking about locals, we're not talking about people that are here on vacation. These are people that are coming in for the day and leaving for the day. And the intersection there that's mentioned, that from the St. Winward Road to 28 just becomes a constant log and all the way down 28. And if you look at the timing, what's going on with the ferries and the traffic that's associated with people going on and off the islands, it just adding 10% more traffic that's trying to get out to that same Route 28 off of St. Winward Road is just going to further create a bigger and bigger problem. So we talked briefly in the beginning about the buildings and the size of the buildings, and I wanted to encourage the zoning board. I saw some posts earlier this week, there's an oasis development that was done in Plymouth, right across the bridge, very similar size, five buildings, 320 units. Guys can jump in your car, go across the bridge, it's right on Route Three. But they managed to build the five buildings on 25 acres rather than to try to cram the five buildings onto 15 acres. The property is designed and developed with three sides of the property, largely wooded areas away from all the housing. They're not trying to stick this development in a residential neighborhood. And one side of the property is abedded by Home Depot, Lowe's, malls, shopping, where people would work and people would transfer, and they're also freely accessed right through Route Three. So when you build this type of property, and you build it in the right area, I'm sure it's very well built, but when you're trying to cram 300 units into a residential neighborhood, people are going to be offended by it. And just from, I'm not an architect, but I was just looking and doing a little research, and I want everybody here to think about this when you leave here tonight. If you walk out of the parking lot and you look back at Morgan School where we are tonight, it's a two-and-a-half-story building. The buildings that these guys are promoting building are going to be 1.5 times taller than this building. This building is 129,000 square feet. The housing and the buildings that they're going to put up are going to be 400,000 square feet of buildings. Five buildings, four buildings of 81,000 and another building of 79,000. I mean, the school we're standing in is 129,000 square feet. So that's, if you look back at this building, imagine it 5X on 15 acres, that's what they want to put in off of San Torre. Thank you, guys, for your time. Hopefully, on the traffic study, you guys will take into account the ferry traffic.
I believe any other public comment this evening? Okay, thank you. The applicant, just do some cleanup. Hold on one second. Is there somebody else that wanted to make a comment this evening?
Peter Krieger here, I'm on Meredith Drive. I was doing a little bit of.
You stand closer to the microphone so the people on TV can hear you.
Very good, sir. I wanted to ask, if they're going to do the building, I have several questions on it. Are they going to clearcut the entire acreage right up to the property line, eliminating the older trees? Or are they, where they're going to have around the clubhouse, if there are trees there, why not leave the species trees that are there instead of replacing them with a, a species of a tree that doesn't grow native in the area? They'll only live for about five to 10 years and they'll die because it's not used to this area. And if they do get trees, they should be replaced with trees that were growing on a key because they can tolerate the sand and the gravel that's here. The other thing was, as pointed out about the cars and the number of cars per household. According to, in March, or August 2nd of 2023, the average household in the United States has two cars, not 1.66, but it's an actual two cars because I'm sure all of you people here drove down here, and I'm sure your other half has a car in the driveway. Just going by that alone. They also talk all the time about the wastewater treatment plant. And as pointed out, it'll eventually be 900 units there. And we also had the fire department make the comment about the water, the water pressure, what happens with the water pressure. If it does, in fact, go down into the sandy soil that's there and back into the Coonamessit River, all well and fine. But then you have to deal with 10% of solid waste. Where is that going to go and how is it going to be removed? The, the thing that's going on here, you're endangering, if you allow a five-story building, the fire department can't get to the five-story building or a four-story building or a three-story building. You're endangering the lives of those on the top and the second from the top floor. If you feel that you can live with it, if there is an actual fire and someone dies, I hope you can live with yourself because that's what it comes down to, the bottom line. And if they're going to have electric throughout, is he going to be able to put in solar panels so that he's not diversifying from the grid? I guess that's about it, gentlemen. Hopefully, I'm not too winded. Thank you.
If you don't mind, just like Attorney Peter Freeman, to speak to the benefit of working groups, and I know there's two attorneys, three attorneys, town councilors there would be up to six, but I know the two attorneys that are sitting up there have, in other towns and other situations, have pushed for the working sessions. And I understand the neighbors' concern, and they're wanting them to be open, and I think with the cooperation of Community TV, you can have that benefit as well. And I'll let Peter speak to it because he speaks the language with you guys.
Thanks, Dave, for the record. Peter Freeman, attorney representing the applicant. I'm not going to add much to what Dave said, but I do understand and respect the need and the desire for transparency. But the way the process works is, it's not secret. Anything that happens at those work sessions is reported back by the zoning board member who attends. There can be absolutely no commitment, commitment or decision by the member or members of the board or other town staff that attends a workshop. There can be some general, gee, that's a good idea, we might say the same, and some back and forth. But the reason that it works is because you can sit down together, you can have the back and forth. Again, it's not secret or private or trying to deprive the public of anything. It's just the nature of beast when you have complicated designs and plans and impact areas that you are legitimately looking at and we want to satisfy you. So I know from my experience that it has helped many a project, whether they're big or small, and I've been on all kinds of projects. So I would just implore you to schedule a workshop. That's the way it would work. You can have whoever you want, either one or two zoning board members. And I just think it would really help this process. It doesn't delay anything. It's still transparent because everything would be reported back, and it's just a way to have a much more natural, relaxed exchange of ideas with professionals. And it's not meant to basically posture or to get into anything that is other than the professional, technical, serious back and forth on whatever issues are the concerns. And we know the concerns, and we respect everything that everybody has said. So I, from personal experience, really implore you to agree to a workshop. Sometimes more than one is helpful. If the first workshop doesn't work, then okay, so be it. But that's really all I wanted to say. Thanks.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like some clarification because it is my understanding that these are open meetings, so the public can attend the workshops. They may not be able to speak, to get the dialogue, but there's, it's not a lack, I think there's a large amount of transparency. Then they can speak at a later time when the discussion group brings their conclusion to the board and the public.
Two things, I think that's correct, and certainly we have no objection. If there's an appropriate facility, there can still be a table for the people talking and other people. We're not trying to shut anybody out, but I would defer to Paul, I guess you're, oh, you have George Pucci, tenured council now, special counselor. Paul, as a consultant, you can speak to that as to whether the public, you know, has a right to be there and how you think it would be effective.
I think it would probably be the board's intention that on our February 15th meeting that that would be one of the topics that we would be discussing in figuring out a path forward or not.
Okay, that's fine, then we don't have to say anymore about it tonight. I guess that's what you're saying. Thank you.
Just one more minute, I want to clarify. In classic example of the difficulties in not being able to explain things is some of the comments about the shadow study tonight. And it's just a matter of someone not having all the information to read and digest and understand what's going on, so they draw a wrong conclusion. But we'd like to avoid that. But more importantly than that, two big things that Saxon has been doing. And if you listen to the traffic experts that are here, during this process, in the last 30 days on the traffic, Vanessa's pushed our team to go beyond, answer questions, address issues, because the biggest problem and the biggest benefit of the traffic, traffic study, is determining what the existing conditions are. And Falmouth has a huge challenge to their existing conditions that are there. And I would like the people that are here tonight to take some time because sometimes it's not noticed. But your board of selectmen have, on their agenda and on their webpage and everything else, complete streets program. And I was pointed to it just the other day, and I got into it and started reading it. And you have a massive program that they have been working on for some time to improve all the streets in town. And you can go through it, you can see what they're doing, you can actually, it then kicks you over to Mass DOT's website, and they list all their projects, whether or not they're going to be difficult, what they're going to cost. And they're not coming back to the town, they're trying to get it done through Mass DOT's funding program. And when that was brought to our attention, the first thing we did is, we reached out to Mass Housing. Because when you're building an apartment building, something that is desperately needed by the region, that the governor wants, it enables you to sometimes help push priority funding to what the town you're working in wants. We've made that call, we'll continue to make the calls, we'll continue to go beyond when you guys ask us to look at different locations. Most developers would say, that's not in our requirements to look at. And so far, every single question that Vanessa's come back to us with, we've said, we'll look at it, we'll consider it, we'll see what we can do. And to that extent, was brought to our attention also that one of the key elements, and most people seem to mention it tonight, is the buffer. We thought that we were chasing the right type of buffer with garages and keeping trees, but listening to the public tonight and listening to the previous meetings, you don't want anything in that buffer. You'd rather see the garages out. And that's the type of thing that happens at a work session. But we're waiting for one more important document, we're waiting for the civil peer review. Once we get the civil peer review and we can understand where our baseline is, that's when we would like that work session. And I envision that work session in the basement of Town Hall in that area, have Community TV. Yeah, if somebody's there and they want to ask a question, sure, we'll let you talk, we'll let you look at the plans, we'll let you schedule where your garage is. But I think we can focus on the buffer, and we can create a strong enough buffer that, can we get to 100 feet? I don't think so. Can we get to 50 feet on the east? And the south be a challenge, but when we get that baseline, we can start working on it. So I think we can do what you want. And I know there's a lot of comments about projects in this, luxury in this. We're trying to do something really nice, really nice, for the affordable and for the market. And I think at the end of the day, your concerns about traffic and those type of things, the engineers can provide input, we can all lobby the state, and we can make it a better project and a better thing for the town. That being said, we'll be back on the 15th. Civil will have Allen and Major. We'll also bring the architect back.
So we'll do the civil review, we'll do the shadow review, and we'll have a working group discussion, so that's kind of the agenda for now.
If we could launch the working group, starting like, if on the 15th you guys say it's good, we're going to pencil in the following Friday.
I'm not sure where we're going to go with the work.
You might say no, but we'll have our people reserve that following Friday, not the next day, a week after that.
Why, why can't you just put that together and bring it to us? My objection.
What's going to happen if we do, if we. What's going to happen if we do, if we bring it to you, you're going to have, you don't have the ability to lay a plan in front of the board and in front of the people and show them what's going on.
We have screens.
You can't even see these.
Well, I mean, I, you know, I mean, the chairman said we'll talk about it on the 15th.
I prefer that, yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Do you want to discuss a date for the balloon test and where you want to have that held or do you want to wait for the next meeting? I think you want to provide enough notice for folks.
The balloon test. You have a copy of the letter that will go out to the neighbors. We will pick a date, once we get a weather window, we'll back off that window, weather window to try to give the neighbors, you know, five days' notice. You can't push it out 10 days because then all of a sudden we'll be giving them a bad date. So we'll probably give them two dates based on the weather window. It'll be mailed to them. We hope that the ZPA can also post it on their website so people can check in on it. And we'll execute it on that date, and if the weather goes bad, we'll flip to the next day.
Can you investigate as to lengthening that window? I think that the two hours you propose is simply not enough.
It's on my resume.
Okay, I would appreciate that, and so would everyone here.
We're working on the page numbering in your extension of time.
So we typically would provide dates in advance, like prospective dates, as opposed to just a five-day notice. So it would either be something where the board would pick a date today or at your next meeting? But you typically want to pick a date sufficiently far in advance so that the public has notice and then perhaps have a rain date or something, a weather date.
Mr. Chairman.
The weather window.
Yes, the weather factor. And it's going to be set up so that any members of the board can go and the public can go. It's not a site visit per se, and in this case, there'll also be the aerial photography of the drones. So again, it's not a, it's a balloon test to show something, there's no discussion, everybody can go on their own. And because of the weather, it's just impossible and not practical to say, you know, give several dates, several dates.
Hold on, folks. Go ahead, Mr. Freeman.
Several dates or, you know, a week or two weeks in advance. Again, it's just the reality of having to deal with weather conditions. So, you know, Dave is trying to work in good faith and accommodate and, you know, immediately agree to that. So I just hope you understand and agree that Dave will do what he said, it's just the most practical way. Thanks.
I mean, I tend to agree with everything you're saying, but to Noreen's point, we just want to make sure that we have as much notice to the folks as, as possible, quite honestly.
You might be able to take like a 10-day period and whatever the weather is acceptable because I, last Wednesday, when it was scheduled, I mean, it turned out to be quite windy and we weren't actually given your response email or, but anyway, I mean, if you, we could pin down a window and then you could, you know.
What we'll do is we'll.
That way, everybody would have, you know, it's coming, you know, and know roughly when it's coming. And then, I can understand the weather thing exactly, I mean, you're entirely correct. And the weather, they can't even predict the weather, we can't ask you to.
I'll talk to the engineers tomorrow, we'll see how big a window we can provide. We'll try to get the mailing out sooner than that. When the mailing goes out, the town can post it on the website, and we'll give a backup date. So if it's next Tuesday and we give them five days' notice and it winds up in their mailbox that early, we'll also write in that, we'll tell them that it could go to Thursday dependent upon the weather.
Yeah, just keep Noreen in the loop so that everybody's on the same page. Okay, thank you. Y'all set for the 15th? Okay, very good, thank you. Okay, thank you, Suzanne. Again, for most of you here in the, the audience, I just wanted to, again, to confirm with you and those watching at home that the next meeting on this proposal will be on February 15th here at Lawrence School, starting at 6:00 p.m. So that'll conclude. Oh, sorry.
I'll make a motion to continue until February 15th at 6:00 p.m.
So we have a motion to continue on on February 15th as your second.
We're going to do a board discussion, future agenda items.
Well, we're just going to close this.
Oh, continue this, okay, I'm sorry.
So are you a second?
Absolutely, I'm there if you want to.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, February 15th at 6:00. Thank you.
Thank you.
We're going to move on to open meeting items. Noreen, are we set to vote on the minutes for December 14?
Oh, we're going to table the minutes.
We're going to table the minutes, okay? Is there any board discussion?
Yeah, I was going to, did you want to stick one?
Seeing none? Board updates? Seeing none. Any future agenda items?
I got one.
Okay. Hold on one second, Suzanne.
Marquez.
Future agenda item?
Yeah, I brought this up last week, and I noticed that.
Could you speak up, Mar?
I'll go in the microphone for you, Jerry. I noticed that we don't have town council here, and I want that to be on the agenda for a vote. I mean, I was prominent in pushing for Mr. Pucci, which I'm completely thrilled that we have him and his expertise. But I still consider Brian an appendage, and I think I would, I would like him here. He's been immensely helpful to me, and I just do not see where, his presence wouldn't be a plus, and we need all the pluses we can get, so I'd like to have that on the agenda the next meeting.
Understood. Thanks. All right, I believe that pretty much concludes everything. The next zoning board of appeals meeting will take place on February 1st at 6:00 p.m. at Town Hall. I believe that that takes care of everything. If there's a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's it. Thank you very much, everybody.